Japan now.
No, you know where the same Japan is? No, Japan and North Korea. Yeah.
You're awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah.
She's bringing back my.
Continue.
Ten tips.
Yeah.
She's uh, yeah, she's been upgraded.
Yeah, they really don't want their shoulders.
How's it going?
This is just, his is just for. He called me and said that he had no warning. The lights field was out of telephone charges.
No noise tonight?
Okay, perfect.
They know where to send them if needs. Corrective. Training. Your shirt reminds me of mint chocolate syrup ice cream.
This is the, their roots.
Yes, someone who shouldn't talk.
Hey.
His dad worked at Tunderland.
Decades, decades.
Come on.
He's like a lunch table.
Welcome to our call.
And said the Saturday. Wanted to hear when we're gonna forgive him lunch. She said, are you?
Yeah.
You'd need to look back. She said, are we doing this like for both of you? The outstation.
Hey, how's it going? Good to see you.
Thank you. And their folks are mad because Darren's got a hundred dollars. I would say.
Well, yeah, you can't take over.
I'm so sorry. I thought.
Look how far over. In the corner.
Yeah, I think what we're doing is. Well, I think that we, we can identify who those families are and who the visitors are.
First band.
Yeah. Like, are you talking to us? What's going on?
I don't know.
Oh, I think we got something.
We got some makeups.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, I gave credit to state and do it.
Got it, everybody. I've, uh, that's what we should go for today. Although, do you have any scissors up there? Yeah, otherwise I'll have to act like a five-year-old and. I just don't wanna be making the crinkling sound once the meeting starts. It's like I gotta get this in here, but. It's oak season.
All right, Deborah, just let me know when you're ready. While she's doing that, I just wanna ask everybody if you can remember to speak into your microphones. Cindy, I think that some people were having a hard time hearing you as well on yours. And then for City Council, if you can just make sure you speak into the microphone, that way the people in the audience here and people online can hear.
Yeah, Jared, we can't believe you.
So I'll start with me. We had the microphones working really well last time.
You wanna go ahead and start and I'll work over there at the part.
Right. Uh, but the live stream is.
Go about your spot.
Okay. All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order at five thirty. We'll start with a roll call.
Gina Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Phil King, District Three.
David Mers for District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. If you will, please stand with me for the pledges of allegiance and then remain standing for the indication. First, for the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Then we have David Simmensen from Casterville Community Church.
Please pray with me.
Please stand with us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather peacefully tonight and to conduct the fairs of our community. I pray for our elected leaders and for all those who are gathered with them, that you may guide us by your wisdom and by your grace. I pray for your protection over all those who are traveling tonight on our busy roads. Thank you for the beautiful wallflowers and as a reminder of your abundant provision and miraculous love. In the name of Jesus Christ, your son, my savior, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, next item is citizens' comments. If anybody would like to speak for citizens' comments, please state your name and your address, and please, let's keep comments limited to three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Schreiner, and I live at one eighteen Carm Street. And I am coming here this evening to say happy anniversary. Ten years ago, two thousand fourteen, right here in this chamber, the city council decided that they were going to allow the city to have a summer swim team. And it was eight hundred dollars to get it started, and in the last ten years, it has provided a transition from swim lessons to actually having strong swimmers who are practicing that particular skill, which is a fantastic thing to have, given the multitude of waterways that we have in the area. It's a life-saving skill that lasts an entire lifetime. And out of that program, we've had lifeguards, lifeguard instructors, pool managers, and even the current parks manager, which is no small thing. So it's been a really fantastic investment and much appreciated that ten years ago, that, you know, you gave the team a chance and to be able to see it do so well for the community. So happy anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments?
Joseph Lane, twelve hundred C R fifty-seven eleven, McColl, Texas. I received this week the city council agenda report and map provided with it. The, uh, the, the agenda report says that it was to provide accurate G I S data of the airport. I looked at the map and reviewing the map, there is no legend on the map, so I'll make some assumptions going through the map and see what's, what's on there and what's not, as is previously described. We've seen previous maps shown and so making some assumptions. One of my assumptions is that the red rectangle in the middle of the map is the runway. But the runway then shows it's extending out into our property away. I looked and checked before I left my house, and the runway's not out there on my property, so. I guess the accuracy of the map is in question as to what this is for. And if there's proposals in the future, are these proposals also included into the zoning? So as again, no legend on the map, so I'm assuming that some of these, these ovals that are on the map are part of the zoning areas.
We have agenda item. We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, and so with these, these zoning areas, there's no, said no legend, so I'm making assumptions. These are the zoning areas, and part of the agenda also says that the city councils decide where and how many zones they would like to see. So if these are zonings on the map, how are they shown here when the city council hasn't decided what the zoning is on the maps and how's to be, how far the zonings would go out? So this is a good map. I appreciate you sending it, being able to see where the property is and everything, but until we get the areas that we need to know what exactly the difference is and where it's gonna be in the zoning. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to the discussion later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments?
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Alexander, and I reside at five sixteen Vienna Street. I'm here today to talk about item number twelve on the agenda. As you all know, my husband Bruce Alexander can't be here today, as he is the president of the Texas Water Association, and he's at their annual Water Convention in San Antonio. He applied for a position on the P and Z within a month ago. At the last meeting, when Councilman Carey was ready to appoint him, the mayor said that it could not be done because the process was to review applications at one meeting and make the appointment and take action at the next meeting. The mayor stated that the city needed more time to solicit more applicants. Tonight, the agenda states to review and take action on the appointment. While I am not questioning the qualification of the other applicants, based on the mayor's statements, the only applicant to be, to have action taken on at this meeting is my husband, Bruce Alexander. To do anything else on this agenda item is unfair to him and the citizens that support him. On the other note, I appreciate the temporary stop signs that were put up. It really has slowed down some of the traffic. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments?
Kyle McVeigh, three oh seven Madrid. Gosh, I bet you wonder why I'm here. Several years ago, and I do mean several years ago, we've tried to get an animal shelter in Casterville. Well, we've had all the excuses and all the reasons. First, you didn't have the land. Then we got the land. Then we had a memorandum of understanding. We were supposed to come up with the money for the actual building. Well, we couldn't raise enough money for it. We were planning on going, because to get the land, if you had the land, then you could go to some groups like Petco, Petmark, something like that. They would do capital improvement structures. By the time we actually got the land so that we could apply for these grants, they stopped doing it because people abused the system, and so they just stopped it altogether. So my whole point is we need an animal shelter. I know you know what's happening down ninety. You know all the growth coming in. Every one of those homes will have a minimum of two to three kids and two to three animals, and they're gonna start dumping them, and when they do, Casterville's gonna be the recipient. Please, please, let's try to work together to get this. I know Mr. Dixon has said that it wasn't so much the land, it wasn't so much the cost of the building, it was the employee. Because by the time you pay somebody and all the benefits and everything, that's your major cost. Well, you already have two people right now that their, their, uh, jobs are divided. One for sure could be strictly for animal control. Joshua's excellent. He's done a great job for the city and possibly keeping him, boosting him up a little bit. Volunteers, we could get tons of volunteers. We've had calls all the time from the high school, from scout troops, from everybody wanting to help at an animal shelter, and they're willing to do anything. So please, the land that I wish you would really, really consider is on four seventy-one, which was purchased to put an animal shelter, the utilities, public works, and the police department. It's still an excellent place to do it. The animal control could be located on the end where the creek is that floods. Fantastic dog park. It would be great. I mean, you wouldn't have to worry about anything. Please, think about four seventy-one. It's accessible. It's very viable as far as people are concerned because they could actually come, and we could be adopting out and taking care of animals easily. Okay, that's my first one.
And I will ask you to please, we're almost at time, if you could just keep it under the three minutes.
This is the other one.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a member of the P and Z, and I know you have several applicants tonight for that opening. Please consider people that have the qualifications, that have the ability to actually do a good job on serving on that board. Because having people come in that don't have a clue about ordinances, about zoning, about anything about the city, they're there, they're coming in, but they're not really an asset. Mr. Alexander would be a tremendous asset to that board, so my two cents. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for public comments?
Hello, how you doing, Stephen? My name's Joe Holshaus at six oh two Berlin Street. I'm talking in reference to agenda item number twelve, applications submitted for open positions on the city boards. I wanna recommend Bruce Alexander for the Planning and Zone Board, Zoning Board. He's currently the superintendent of East Medina County Special Utility Districts. He currently works with developers of all sizes to develop, to develop non-standard agreements in accordance with all district policies and legal requirements. He saw, also has a senior licensed water operator license. He has twenty-five years of experience with the city of Casterville, including being the Public Works Director. He started as a lineman here as a city, and he worked his way up getting his wastewater license. He also was a licensed code enforcement officer. He's a certified building, plumbing, and fire inspector. He saw, also obtained his license for T C E Q customer service inspections, and he helped negotiate and determine the current Casterville Water and Sewer C C N. He also negotiated the purchase, purchase of the Medina Valley W S C Water System, and he provided testimony of both the T C Q and Public Utility Commissions on water, sewer, electric, and natural gas issues involving expanding the city's area boundaries to support growth. He also helped prepare annexation, annexation plans for service to new areas requesting annexation into the city. He helped develop both the subdivision ordinance in two thousand and ten and two and utility policies designed to apply to current and future growth. He also reviewed all plaques that came before the P and Z for consideration and approval, and he ensured compliance with the requirement of the C C O on all building permits and development. He also worked on with the variance board on the different type of variances. Mr. Alexander's experience would be a great assist, asset to our Planning and Zoning Board as well as our city as a whole. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right, next item is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular call to city council meeting. We have approval of an interlocal agreement with L C R A to provide access to L C R A's distribution construction services contract with Techline Construction. We have approval of an interlocal agreement with L C R A to participate in their material acquisitions program, allowing the city to purchase specific goods under the L C R A contract. We have approval of an inter, interlocal agreement with L C R A to provide services on the city electric facilities. We also have approved a resolution for funding of the city hall remodel project. And finally, we have accept and the annual racial profiling report. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Phil. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Councilman Carey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item is review and accept the F Y twenty twenty-three financial audit. And for this, we have Kim Roach, Armstrong, Vaughn, and associates speaking.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm a little bit shorter. I'm trying something new this evening. And certainly you've got your bound copies of the audit in front of you, but I would like to try to maybe keep you from having to turn through so many pages, so I've tried to put all of our audit highlights on this one single page that I've passed out to you this evening. So any other questions you may have, I'm happy to entertain, but unless you've got other questions, I'll just stick with this page. So going down through the, through the page, I've got, just as an overview, we did issue what's called an unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion, so that is the best that we can give. We did have some adjusting entries, but very typical in nature, and a lot of them just dealing with timing. As far as material or significant findings, we did not have any. However, we did have a couple of areas for recommendation for improvement. We've outlined those in this, in the letter that accompanies your audit report. We've discussed them with management, and I'd be happy to, to discuss those any further if you'd like, but otherwise, they've been made available to you. Any questions so far?
Not for you. I have one for Scott. So in regards to the oversight of the grant funds, did we already take, spend the money for the tender out of the airport for U S D A?
Yes.
And we just haven't gotten the money back?
Yeah, money was spent. The U S D A loan needs to be closed out. There's about, I think, sixteen thousand dollars remaining in the loan.
Okay.
To be closed out.
Okay.
I think I've kind of expressed where U S D A is, is the challenge to work with. So documentation has to be sent two or three times sometimes to the same person, and then, anyway, it's a mess. But that'll be closed out, and as soon as that's closed out, then that grant will be awarded to the city. And that's one of the things that came out of the audit, so that'll be fixed pretty quickly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Um, well, just going down the general fund, as you can see there, I've added a three-year trend analysis, so you can kind of see the changes. But I've tried to summarize it to say just your total revenues, your total expenditures. And then the fourth column, of course, down there, I also have your budget. So you will notice that your total revenue actually declined from the prior year in the general fund. The primary reason for this decrease was because in F Y twenty-two, you had the one-time American Rescue Recovery Plan Act grant funds that were just that one-time year. So that was really the primary reason for your revenues coming down in F Y twenty-three. Your revenues did exceed your budget primarily due to the fact that your sales tax came in almost half a million higher than your final estimated budget. So fantastic year for sales tax. Within your expenditures, your expenditures did go up quite a bit from prior year, and there's a lot of various reasons for that. This comes primarily from a three to six percent COLA wages across the board for the city employees. It also comes from several, several consulting and professional services, including engineering and other contracted type services. There was additionally, there was some building maintenance for the redesign of city hall, as well as some P D vehicles that were purchased during the year, and a lot of the maintenance and repairs and just, you know, and getting those outfitted and everything when, when purchased. So that's kind of the reason for your increase in expenditures. Overall, your expenditures did exceed your final estimated budget by about seventy-three thousand. This was primarily in just a couple of different departments, and those were, again, sort of the reasons that we've already covered. But a lot of what had happened was when that final budget amendment came to you as council, we had made some journal entries rather than showing some reimbursements as a reduction of the expenditure. We felt they really needed to be shown as revenue, so this increased your revenue, but it caused your expenditures to, to exceed the final budget amendment that was presented to council. So you do look like you exceeded budget, but really it's because there was revenue that was also not budgeted to help offset those. Any questions for that? Well, overall, you can see that you did budget to have a negative reduction of your fund balance by almost one point three million. And in actuality, your change in fund balance for the general fund was less than half a million reduction. So overall, that left you with your ending fund balance of being right at twelve months of your average operating expenditure. So still a very healthy place to be, even with some additional projects that the city's even funding out of the general fund. This is outside of some of the C I P projects that you have going from the bond funds, and we'll look at those in just here in a minute. But this is additional projects or engineering, like a separate professional services that the city's paying for from the general fund. Any questions on that particular fund? Okay. Well, I'm not gonna go quite as in-depth on the utility and the airport funds as I typically do, but I did want you to, of course, see those sort of trends. You can see that your utility is obviously operating at a positive operating income. That's simply just dealing with the rates compared to the expenses. However, I would just remind you that that operating income of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that does include the non-cash for depreciation expense. So if you remove that, your actual operating income would have been one point one million as far as actual increase in your cash. However, that one point one also had to go through and pay your bond principal, which was about eight hundred and sixty thousand, as well as your interest expense that's also detailed below there. We just can't call that an operating expense since it's just paying on the related debt. So overall, now, not necessarily on a cash basis, but just actual adjustments and accrual basis, your utility fund did go up from the previous year by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that is also even after the transfers that were made to general fund. This still helps subsidize the general fund. Any questions there? And then on the airport fund, kind of similar, you can see that you did have an operating loss. Again, I just remind you that that operating loss does include depreciation, which would not be cash. There was actually, you would have had an operating income of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so a pretty healthy change in, in position for the airport just on its stance alone because its related debt costs are not very high. Then on top of that, in F Y twenty-three, it was the completion of the runway improvements out at the airport. So we were required to recognize the tech stop portion of that as revenue to the city, even though it was kind of in a capital form in the sense that they just needed all that improvements to the city. And so that's part of what that transfers in capital contributions of almost nine hundred and fifty thousand. So that certainly goes towards the city's infrastructure and everything. Of course, that will also be depreciated in future years, causing that non-cash depreciation expense to be higher in future years. Any questions there? Then lastly, just a couple of the other fund balances I wanted to mention, the governmental capital projects. So that's the general side of your bonds, though that was the five million. So you can see where you are spending those funds down. Of course, you didn't have it back in twenty-one. You did have a little bit spent in twenty-two, and a majority of it was spent in F Y twenty-three. But you still had about one point seven million available as of September thirty. I'm sure at this point in the fiscal year, though, there's already been a pretty good decline in that balance. And you can also see there that your debt service has continued to grow, and a lot of that's just the allocation of your property tax rate between the maintenance and operation versus the interest and sinking portion. And then finally, I just totaled up all your special revenue funds, of which you've got several different various types of special revenue funds. That includes your court security, your technology, your parks, your drainage fund, several other things in there. And you can see that it's been relative. And you can see that it's been relatively steady over the last three years. And again, a lot of that's because those expenditures and, and revenues are kind of coming in together. Any questions overall? Feel like I covered a lot of stuff, but hopefully at least a little bit more concise for you all.
This is easier to understand. You've been doing this for a little while.
Yes, sir.
Tell me again, how many years it's been now?
Oh. For Casterville alone, probably about 10 years. Yes, sir. We do, though, just, just because I always hate to say that and then make it sound like, oh, well, you know, I'm no longer independent. But we do always, we make sure to require a rotation on our end of staff to make sure that we give you a good, clear, you know, view of things and that kind of keeps us fresh. As well as, you know, of course, in those first several years of the 10 years, we, we had quite a bit of management turnover as well. So we felt like it was a kind of a new look every year.
That's good.
But, but yes, sir. Very happy to be a part of the, the city team and, and performing the audit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent job. You got a question?
Ask me a question?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
On the general fund, the sort of bottom line is fund balance. Whereas in the utility funds and airport funds, it's net position.
Yes, sir.
Can you just briefly explain the difference between those two?
I'll try brief. Basically, the general fund operates much more like a government, whereas the utility fund and airport funds, they're required to operate more like a business. So that's why the, the change in the name is just to indicate what type of entity that they're supposed to be operating as. But it also, when it comes to the accounting side of it, it does make a difference in those adjustments. That's why, for instance, in the general fund, if you, if you had capital outlays such as the police vehicles, you would see those as expenditures in the fiscal year you purchased them versus where in the utility and the airport, I was mentioning that depreciation, because they're recognized as an asset and depreciated over time. So a little bit different approach to them. But great question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Right, anything else? Thank you very much, Scott.
I appreciate the work that our finance department does and I think you already know kind of one of our mottos is continuous improvement. So there's, I view these opportunities every time we get an audit to look at it, okay, is there any way we can tighten? And one of the challenges that I hear where of the small towns is where people would wear multiple hats and just making sure that there's appropriate checks and balances between departments, et cetera. And certainly, I, I feel like we have those in place. I always use this opportunity as kind of like going to the doctor for a fiscal checkup. This is the financial checkup. We say, maybe you think that's what you're up for, so thank you very much.
Well, historically, you have, you've had a very high fund balance, so you've had a lot of funds available. And certainly between the C I P and the bond money that you have come into play the last couple of years, I know the city does have a lot of projects going. So we definitely spent some, some time out here this year. Took a little longer than even usual just to go through all the projects. But I think that that's been a good thing and you still have that healthy fund balance at the end. But with all that, that does, that adds for a lot of extra challenges, including, you know, this following up and the oversight of the grant and everything.
I do feel like you brought it on yourself because you made a prediction of three days or something crazy when, when we talked about how quickly we're going to get through the audit.
Just a few projects.
Yeah, just a few more days, anyway.
Well, this nice, I, I gotta say, as I became more familiar with the audit process, it's really helpful to help us identify how to put additional checks and balances. Small little oversights can be very expensive and so with you catching these, they don't linger for long. And so we can rectify, it was a simple oversight with the USDA and we can rectify that through our processes. So it's, it's really, really helpful in going through this.
And certainly, not, not trying to point blame anywhere, but, you know, certainly I know that the airport manager had also overturned or turned over. And so that, that just kind of added to, you know, just that passing of the torch. I think it just could have easily fallen between the cracks. Yes, sir.
All right, the next item is the city administrator report. Want me to read the whole thing? Go ahead. I'm gonna let Scott handle the details. City administrator report with all things encompassed.
Sure, the items are listed for your reference. I would ask at this point if there's any questions of the items, if there's just a couple that I will, I'll touch on, but I can handle questions first. Yes, ma'am.
So I know at the last city council meeting, when you told us about the T E C Q wastewater treatment inspection regarding the discharge element given to Bain Park.
Yes.
And I had asked if that would, if their decision would make our agreement with him null and void, if we find out if it would.
I don't recall you answering that, asking that specific question. I believe you did, I just don't recall it. But their contract, recall, it terminated in December of 2022, 23? 23, December of, is that right? No, because I think it is, I think it terminated in 22 and we spent a year basically going back and forth, talking about negotiating it. So their contract is in, it's not that it's going to be null and void by T C Q. But in more direct answer to your question as far as like the T C Q and what the shoe, the other shoe that's going to fall, we're waiting on their report. I fully anticipate that their report will have all kinds of allegations of, of issues with the way the, the F element is being used on the Bain Ranch. But I also believe that there's going to be some errors and some false assumptions in that report. So I, I fully anticipate when we get that report, which we still don't have, but when we get that, my first action will probably be to sit down with Councilman King and Brad Bain, anybody else that has knowledge of, of how that was originally set up, to review the, the concerns that T C Q has raised and then prepare a rebuttal of some kind. So that's how I anticipate it's going to unfold.
Okay. The other one I had was in regards to the street project closeout. You had mentioned about the wrong material being used in some spots in your report and I know.
I think it's actually the base material that was already there that he's talking about with the river rock.
Okay, yeah, it said, it didn't specify that. It just said the base material in many, in the many areas consists of larger aggregate and river rock. It didn't say already existing, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so it was already existing. These roads have been here for a long, long time and when they originally built them, they built them out of, in some cases, out of just what was at hand, which in, in many cases, in some, especially on the south side, there's a lot of river rock. You know, one of the things that I think, you know, one of the things that was uncovered in that process, I met with the, the owner of the company actually this past week, came out and we, we visited that area and we happened to do it on a day it was raining. It's kind of perfect because when it's raining, even a light rain, it fills every little, you know.
Divin.
Divin, right. And so it's real clear and the intersections are the ones I'm most disappointed about. But the fact of the matter is the work they did is solid.
Right.
The, you know, that, that street will hold up. It just doesn't look quite the way I, I had hoped. I'd hoped it kind of, kind of looked more like Amelia where the county did that road and it's, you don't see the same treatment there. But they did reveal that early on in the process, they talked about the fact that there's going to be some issues and it was discussed and the, the alternative was we need to bring in a ton of, of base and that was going to be costly. And so that decision, they basically, the decision made not to do that. But that wasn't elevated to me, so I didn't, was it, that would have been a perfect opportunity for us to, for, for me, staff and the engineers to update council and say, hey, the contractors said that they're going to do this work, but they want us to be aware that it's not going to look, you know, when, when they're done, it's probably not going to look like a asphalt road, if you will, because it's, there's too much rough and large aggregate here for them to, to have that kind of a, a finish. I know we've had multi, I've had many different opinions provided to me about this, but I, I trust that, that the, the main reason that, that we see what we see is because of that larger river rock.
Okay. And your report did say it was already existing.
Yeah, I applaud that, yeah, it's definitely existed.
And, and I have one concern. For your tourism and marketing efforts, you have, you want to expand Brianna's, this is Brianna.
Tell them.
Who's that?
She's out at the park. So she's the assistant that was serving for community, this community services department.
Okay. And so by her doing that, is her pay going to be split between the two departments?
It could be. I'm not going to worry about that right now because it's both out of the general fund. If, we do split pay when there are different funds. When, when I have, if I've got someone doing some time for utilities and some time for general fund, then I'll split their pay. When they're serving in multiple general fund departments, I usually go to that effort unless, unless it's going to be something permanent. This is really on a trial basis, going to see how it goes. And if it goes really well, then we may, yeah, we may make a change like that. That'll be something more than likely is going to come up in our conversation as we look at the budget.
That's why I was asking the question.
I, I haven't, you know, I don't even have preliminary numbers on revenues, projected revenues for next year. When we get into that in May and June, that'll definitely be something we talk about is, you know, service level changes. If there's any service level changes you desire, you want to see, where are those and then what are the costs associated with those? Yeah. Can we afford them?
Other questions, Councilman Kerry?
Couple of questions. On the, on the Parks Grant Program, can remember the $150,000 to install lights at Lions Park and a beach entry at Regional Park? I thought the beach entry, the stuff at the Regional Park was, was more expensive. They didn't get that grant, so we voted not to support that because we need a grant.
Yeah, but then you had a very convincing city administrator that told you, if I can get $50,000, which was the same amount as the grant that we were looking at, 50/50, would you be willing to put in the beach entry? Because the beach entry costs 99,000, it's right at $100,000. And what council agreed to is if I'm able to raise half of the money, so get a 50% match, then we would do the lights at Lions Field up to 200,000. So the city's contribution would be 100,000 and then private donations or wherever I'm able to get those would be the other 100,000. And then the beach entry would be the same way, a 50/50. And as of today, we're at the, at the point where we can do the beach entry, I believe. I'm, I'm confirming this because I'm about $17,000 shy of being able to do phase one of the lights at Lions Park and the beach entry.
So, so because that's not explained here, but staff has painted a lighting plan and cost for the multipurpose field at Lions Park, which is approximately $85,000.
Right.
And so that's going to be a 50/50 match then?
Right, so I've already got the 42.5 that I need.
Okay.
Right.
And then the other thing, though, is we mentioned at that meeting was, because I know I was concerned and several of the other council people of how those lights are going to affect the neighborhood.
The neighbors, right.
And you would, would ask you to have a community meetings with those people to make them understand and see what their input is into that because they are going to really frighten up things. And you, and you all said you all would do that.
Well, you haven't, we're not, I don't think we're going to hold a community meeting, but we are going to talk to the owners, the, the people who live behind. I don't have a final design. I've got, I, I want to get a couple more bids. I wasn't happy with the price we got from Musco. They've done excellent work. They've got an excellent reputation, so it's, I kind of really would prefer to use them, but I'm not happy with their price. I think that they, they came in higher than what I would have expected.
You just, I know what, because we, at the Regional Park, we know how much those lit up the whole area.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, for these people to have their backyard and everything, that all came up last time.
Yeah, understand, if you go there tonight.
The softball field to be lit up.
They, they will be.
Well, just, I mean, go there tonight and then, and then we can talk. Because right now, what they're doing, they're leasing lights and they, they are not shielded. They're not, you know, dark sky compliant, they're, so.
It's just like the softball field.
If anything, I think it'll be improved with, with what we do. There isn't a plan, and I want to be clear about this, you know, there isn't a plan for the softball lights yet. One of the things that Parks Board is, is doing with our staff is sending out a survey to determine what, what is the community desire for the future of Lions Park and whether or not we want to continue to have a softball field. I don't, I don't have a dog in that fight, but we do want to get community input and before, especially before we make a major investment in lights. Because lighting a softball field is going to be subtly different than lighting something else. And I say subtly different, it really depends on what use that we're put to. One of the things that we've had some interest in lately is pickleball courts and we've discussed putting them at Regional Park, discussed putting them at Lions Park. And I think that's one of the things that will probably be in the survey is to ask, one, is there, is there significant interest in this? And then two, if there is, where, where should they go? And where does the community want to see them?
I just, I don't want the city to force lights on people if they're these, if it's really going to change the night sky thing.
I think it'll be an improvement over what they have now, I really do, but we will have a conversation and I appreciate you reminding me of that.
Because we had this, as I talked to you about, we had this cute little street light in front of our house and all of a sudden, the city's gone and put this LED that, that has lit up the whole acre, half acre of our property and, and everybody around us. But sometimes we need to be careful about how we can not go out there and be as great as Lewis and it's, it really is overwhelming. The, I like your well site enclosure at, at Lions Park, by the way.
It's not mine. I wish I could take credit for it, but it really, I mean, it was, it's stunning. It looks beautiful. I still don't know how much it's going to cost.
But it looks, who came up with that plan?
Looks, this is Ronnie Echols of Texas Architects.
And this will be well insulated?
Yeah, and I don't know what his materials, you know, it looks almost like an Alamo, I mean.
It looks kind of like the building over, falling down, but still better looking than the Public Works Building and the Public Board Yard.
Yeah, he tried to draw off some inspiration from, there are other buildings around town that kind of have that rock look and he tried to draw some inspiration from that. But I've asked him to prepare a, kind of a white stucco look as well, red roof, white stucco. That was going to, what I originally wanted to do was in the realm of 20 to 40,000 dollars to close that site with a metal structure, nothing fancy, like eye beams in concrete, not even a floor because we don't need it.
Insulation.
Yeah, it, it, you can, you can spray foam, insulate the side and then outside would be a facade, like a, a, you know, a stucco facade. And that would be fairly inexpensive to do. What he came back with was this and it's gorgeous. But at the end of the day, I'm going to get prices for both those options and then depending on the cost, then we'll, we'll bring it to council and discuss it.
Another one, on the streets program, I understand what you're saying. I don't know if I agree with it, but about six, eight months ago, when they had first did Jackson and Geneva Street, which are the two streets on either side of the post office going north, Geneva. Yes. The mayor and I met out there with some citizens, they were very upset with what was going on and how rough the streets were and it looked like it was unfinished project. And the contractor had, what we were told is contractor had told the city that they had subcontracted somebody and they screwed it up and they're going to come back and correct it. But then in city council meeting, you told us that, no, we're not going to accept the streets. They're all going to look like three streets that are over in Country Village. And that's what our, that's what, that was going to be our.
The chip sealed ones, not the.
The chip sealed ones, the chip sealed streets. Yeah. And so I went back and told citizens that.
Yep.
Assured them that this was, and, and so I've lost credibility with a lot of people because they're, they think I'm a lying bastard now. But the minutes don't have to be like that.
You're not alone.
But it really embarrasses us when things like this, because I remember you'd said you'd talk to Devon and Devon had talked to them and the engineers and everything, but K Fries agrees with this assessment that the reason they look so bad from day one, and they've told us this, and K Fries, and yet when the city was coming back and saying, well, this is unacceptable and, and nobody told us back then, because that's where we lost our credibility.
I understand. And, yeah, at the time, that I, at the time, I, I wasn't aware that, that there was a base issue.
There was a what?
There, there was this issue at the base and river rock, et cetera. I had seen that, that the ones over by Country Village turned out well and Amelia turned out well.
And Berlin turned out well. And it's the same rock.
Yeah, the, well, that's the thing is that. Yeah, one, well, also.
And they all did.
Yeah, they all get regraded. They all got regraded, but they didn't get new base brought in. So the existing base is what got used.
Berlin was the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you're remembering things correctly and you're not a lying bastard, but I probably am. Because I, I, I made, anyway, I, I made an assumption in the conversations I was having at the time, with the information I had at the time, that that was going to be able to be corrected. But as it turns out, the only way to correct that would have been to bring in new, new base material and redo those roads, which is, you know, about two and a half times the cost of just doing what they did, which was a, a new overlay, dropping new, you know, basically come out, I mean, you know the process, but they come out, scrape it and grade it and oil it and then.
Oh, there's this one thing called burning the surface and what they do is use very large motor grader. large motor graders, very large motor graders. And they come in there, and they literally just scrape off the top of the stone, and it makes it very smooth, and they do this before they put the chip seal down. And I guess, next time it happens, we probably want to be careful about what equipment they're actually using. There's little motor graders and big ones, and I've seen them with really big motor graders, and they just cut them like a knife, butter. And I think that's probably where this one went wrong. They just, when it was that rough, we should have known it was that rough before they put the chip seal down. You'll see it.
Yeah.
And Kay Freeze or whoever is organizing, overseeing that, should have said, guys, this ain't going to be working. And.
And apparently, they had that opportunity, and instead said, well, we can afford that, so we'll just keep this.
Oh, no, this isn't bringing in new Carol, this is.
Kay Freeze did?
Well, I don't know if it's Kay Freeze or Devon, but between the two of them, they, in the conversation I had with the R.L. Jones, they said, oh yeah, we brought this to your attention fairly early on in the project, and we said that the way to fix this is you're going to have to bring in truckloads of base, but we can make this look better. And we said, no, that's too expensive. But I don't know who we was, if it was we, Devon, we, Devon, and Kay Freeze or not, but.
So we just need to work, this is like so many other things, work in checks and balances, so that when those decisions are being made, they can be made. I mean, that is really a council.
Well, going forward, what I'd like to do is present, kind of set expectations, and do, there's two things. One, make sure that we have core samples as part of our process, so we're sampling that road before we ever do work on it, to determine what's there, and what kind of base exists, and is it a base that will give us the product that we want, the look we want? And then also present to council, when we're talking about a two-course chip seal versus rebuilding the road, that you know what the two differences are going to be. If it's, is it going to turn out like Country Village, and with just a two-course chip seal, which I think everybody's happy with? Or is it going to look more like Lafayette with the two-course chip seal? And we need to, you need to know that in advance, and that's the kind of, what I've challenged Kay Freeze with going forward, is, you know, this was poorly done, expectations weren't very well managed, and I don't like the way this looks, but there's really not a lot to do about it now. I mean, other than if we want to rebuild the road. And I understand what caused it, and I think, you know, they're going to come and talk to you about streets, and our street building process, and what our standard is, so that you all, I say what our standard is, they're going to confirm, kind of state what they believe our standard is, and then confirm it with you. But I think that'll be an opportunity for you to reaffirm what I've just shared with you, so they can, I mean, you can ask them directly, so you really believe this is the case? But that's, I've asked it about three different ways, to several different groups, and they all say the same thing, that, yeah, that base is, it really was, it had too much larger aggregate. And you can see it, especially on Geneva, as you're on the far side over by Dr. Bess, you can really see the larger aggregate, and you can see where it popped up and created and kind of.
And I know what they're talking about, but I've worked on exactly the same roads with large aggregates, and they just cut them off, but it takes a very, it takes a large piece of wood.
Takes the right machinery. And that's possible, we didn't inspect the right machine, or didn't make sure they used it, that's possible.
Or just hold the contractor accountable, but that's, this one's behind us, so we go to the next one. Last thing I was going to talk about, City Hall renovation, has that gone before our HLC?
No, we're working through Texas Historic Commission now.
Well, I know we're working on Texas, but even when we work through Texas, our ordinances still say we have to go before HLC. But does the city, on the city buildings, do we hold ourselves different than what we expect everybody else to do?
We, yeah, we definitely shouldn't. I haven't taken it to THC, because I, or to the HLC, because I don't have, first I'm going to get permission from THC, and, you know, get their blessing, and then I'll have the ability to take it to HLC and say, THC has already looked at this, and they blessed it, and here's what we're planning on doing. But I figured it's a waste of time, if THC comes in, and if HLC blesses it, and then THC comes and says, nope, that won't work, then we have to go back to the drawing board.
Just for clarification, you said Texas, but you meant Texas Historic Commission.
Sorry, Texas, sorry.
THC is Texas Historic Commission, and HLC Historic Landmark Commission.
And, yeah, because some of those have to do with public areas inside, so.
Sure.
So you're right. But, yeah, I do want to make sure that we do run that through HLC, in the fact that they're the ordinances.
I think, I will say, I think we're going to have plenty of time. This is not a project that's going to be done anytime soon.
And that's all I have.
Great. Councilor Kier?
Yes. On the Texas dot Super Street project, it says six main travel lanes and two access lanes per side. Does that mean 10 total? Or 16?
Yes. It means 10 total.
Okay.
Three each way for the through?
Three main travel lanes on each side, and two access lanes on each side. Okay. Does the Texas dot plan currently still involve the Michigan left to get out of Alsatian Oaks?
I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't seen the latest and greatest from Alsatian Oaks, but I'm a Bay or Bay No, but I believe so.
It would be, you would not be able, the people from Alsatian Oaks would not be able to go directly, like if they're going to.
They can't go across, yeah.
Or step.
I know, I know that that's, yeah. If that's what you're referring to, Texas dot's been very adamant, they are not going to allow those people, they're not going to allow people exiting Alsatian Oaks to go across the highway.
They call it R cut.
Oh, I grew up calling that a Michigan left, you have to turn right and go do a U-turn.
David, you're in Texas. How dare you?
I knew what he was talking about.
I'm not from Michigan. Is there any opportunity for public comment in the Texas dot planning process for the first, for the eastern half of Medina County? Is there anywhere?
Yeah, I mean, the shore industry, yes, I don't know where, when, and how, but you're highlighting one of the things, I opened this up to questions first, because I had a couple items I wanted to bring up, and I was going to see if we covered them. One of them was this, just to make you all aware, that, you know, that Super Street concept is moving forward, that, to my knowledge, Texas dot has required the 70 feet of dedication, or reservation of that right of way, so whatever right of way they have, which is typically around 300 feet as you go east of us, or west of us, that places like Microsoft, which we see being developed to our west, and the.
The subdivisions too.
Yeah, well, I was thinking the subdivision is too, D.R. Horton, D.R. Horton's building like 1,600 homes to our east. And you'll see, as you drive, there's already concrete going in place in the median for those R cuts. So they are, they have every intention of requiring that reservation of each one, they already are, and we can expect that they're going to bring that Super Street all the way up to 471 South. So, and then what happens after that, I know the mayor and I have multiple, are going to have multiple meetings with Texas dot about this, but to our knowledge, there's not a current plan, they are doing, they are looking at 90, they're doing a 90 study, but our concern is they're already building out this Super Street, and they have plans to build it out, and they're getting the reservation for the right of way to build it out, but there's nothing, you know, what's going to happen after they get to 471, and when they get to the river, it's just, it's a bottleneck, and it's real plain to see in black and white on any map, unless they come up with a fix. And the only two fixes that I'm aware of are to go over Castroville, to do a bridge, or to go around it. And that's really, I don't think there's any other viable option.
We support them going under it, but I think you call that, that's an underground swimming pool?
Yeah, during, next to the river, I don't think that would work. Although, you know, they've made it under the tanks. Yeah, well, and they made it under the tanks, so.
I stand all the way.
Who knows? But, yeah, so I think there should be a cause for concern, maybe not alarm, but certainly a cause for concern, and we need to work very closely with Texas dot to understand what their plans are. And, yeah, I still hope, you know, when we met with Lance Simmons at the State Capitol, he was supportive of the city's desire to develop a boulevard. He said that we can do that, we can make 90 a boulevard, but that that would require an alternative route, a true alternative route for 90. And so I'm still hopeful that that can be the solution, that even if they build out this Super Street, that at some point in the future, there is an alternate route that allows the city the opportunity to go back and boulevard 90 through town and on either side of us.
And if, you know, let me, let me kind of pick it up from here. So the question was, can individuals work with Texas? Yes, you can, there is a public process. They talk, they have a quarterly meeting, I think it is. If you reach out to the local, so our local engineer is a local guy, Clayton Rips, he's very communicative.
He is retiring very, very soon.
Well.
That's what I heard.
Clayton, you're not allowed to retire.
I thought you were talking to.
Here comes Arnie.
Okay. I'm trying to talk in this.
Do that, but make me sit.
Hello?
Yeah. I'll just talk a lot, this is very frustrating.
Well, it looks like it is.
So, well, let's, I don't want to belate the point, but the main thing is, there is a process, you can talk to Texas dot about it, we are working with them as well, but each individual can reach out on your own, if you have thoughts and preferences, and depending on what you want to see, I don't want to see a bridge over Castroville, personally, that is what I'm working against. So what I am doing on behalf of the city is working with Texas dot to try and find a different way. Ultimately, they have the decision to make this, we don't have the decision, and if we do absolutely nothing, if we don't work with a county to develop alternate routes to go around Castroville, one day, you will see a bridge over Castroville.
And it'll kill downtown, just like it killed Wichita Falls.
What the impact of that is, I don't know, but I don't want to see it. And so that's why we're trying to work on the other things, is, because that's something, so what, the good news is, that they are doing the R cut first. So their plans right now are to go from 410 to 211, three through lanes each direction, two access roads each direction. They will stop that at 211, from what I've seen, they'll do the R cuts from there up to 471 South.
Yep.
And then ultimately, they will turn the rest of that all the way down to 471 South into three lanes each way, so you'll have a freeway that stops right there at the Circle K, if it's still there. On the other side, at five points.
If you can get it louder.
Thank you. On the other side, at five points, it opens back up to, they're pushing for 450 feet, so you will have a freeway on that side, and a freeway on that side, and you'll have a bottleneck in between. And so that's why we've been working very closely with Texas dot and with the county. So I would encourage everybody, if you are concerned about that, if you don't want to see that, work with your county representatives, work with Texas dot, we're all trying to work on this together, so that we're not just buried in the middle of traffic. So there are many routes around that.
Last question, is there, are the thoroughfare meetings with the county, are they public meetings that people can attend and give comments at, or should we just contact our county representatives directly?
So typically, no. Typically, there are, there's not quorums there, they aren't stated meetings, they aren't public meetings for that reason. But, so, but yes, go and, you know, contact your county rep, contact your city rep, let them know what your concerns are, and then also, Texas dot has a, if you go to their website, they have a public comment option, and we highly encourage people with strong opinions about Highway 90, that they go to the Texas dot website and lodge their concerns.
And I will say, if you get on one of those meetings, it was kind of shocking when I first got on there, because they open it up to public comments, and then they close the meeting. So they don't discuss it on that meeting typically, they open it up to public comments, you have to get the packet, you have to read through the packet, but they will open it up to public comments. But if you work directly with them, a lot of times, they're very, they're very good about that. And same thing with your county, because the things that are happening, the traffic that impacts us is not happening in the city, it's happening outside of the city, we're just dealing with it. So work closely with your county representatives and with Texas dot.
And I want to be clear, there will be county thoroughfare plan, so they will have public meetings when they're ready to do that. And I think they're really close. My understanding is they're like 90% complete with the county thoroughfare plan, so I don't have a timeline on that, but I would expect that fairly soon, they're going to start having public meetings and seeking public input.
Just as we would, once we get to that point.
Yep.
Okay. More questions?
That's all, thank you.
Councilor Kier?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. So the only other thing I'm going to bring up, since we talked about most everything, was the stormwater improvements on Garcia Creek. So just so you understand, so this was one of the items that was identified in the stormwater master plan as needing attention. Our engineer went out and reviewed and saw that it's, you know, obviously, it's not gotten better on its own, didn't expect that, but it has gotten a little worse.
Can you clarify where Garcia Creek is?
So this is the creek that runs just.
If you take Geneva Street all the way back into River Bluff, the bridge, that is Garcia Creek.
Perfect, yeah. So that, that bridge, the buttman's underneath it, and then the, that creek just to the east, as you head east, you can see that there's a property owner that's losing land to, you know, his backyard.
Towsers.
Yep, both sides are. So, and then you have the kind of spillways that we built, not spillways, but the culverts that were built along that creek, they've all been washed out underneath, the culverts are still there, so they can still be salvaged, but they need to be propped up. There is a, there's a short-term fix, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then there's actually fixing it, which is going to be about a million dollars. What staff is recommending is we go ahead and fix it, and we issue some debt to do so out of the drainage utility, the drainage utility has the ability to support that debt, without any additional increase to payers. So that's what we're recommending, but I've got to look in, I've got to talk to SAMCO, look at when we would issue, what that would, you know, basically, what that would cost, what the project's going to cost. I've got a little bit more homework to do before I bring it to you, as a final project, but you have in your packets, the engineer's preliminary report, which shows you kind of what needs to be done. Separate from that are the larger drainage projects that have to do with mostly south of 90, so Athens and Constantinople and those areas. There is some funding, I'm trying to remember, flood infrastructure fund, that comes available in April, the preliminary application is April, so we'll be applying for funds to do something along those lines. There's no commitment on the city's part to apply for the funds. If we get them, then we'll, we'll talk about, okay, what project are we doing, how big is this project, what is the city's match? The city's match can be anywhere from 20 to 50%, and some of those projects are pretty costly, so we'll have to really think through what we're going to do, et cetera. Tonight on the agenda is a calendaring item to set some public meetings, so we'll talk about when it's appropriate to have that drainage meeting, but staff, I think, is ready to have that when you all are ready to call it. That's all I have.
All right. Anything else?
I have some requests that, for the website, for Texas dot to give the input on the thoroughfare, if we can put it on the city's webpage link, that way they could click on it and provide the report, please.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Next item is discussion and review of GIS maps related to the draft airport zoning ordinance. First, I want to, I want to thank you for your comments on that. I find it's, it's very frustrating when you're like, okay, you're giving me this much information, and there's this much information that I need. Part of the thing is, we're trying to get out information as quickly as we have it, and so it's not always going to be complete, but we're, we are doing this very slowly and methodically, putting out the information first. If you ever need clarification, of course, we'll go over it here before we're making decisions. We are going to talk this through and make sure that everybody is aware of it. Once we go through the process, we will identify where those areas are, we'll work with, I think we're, I don't know if we're doing it internally, or if we're working with the county, to make sure that notices are going out to the people in the individual zones. So this is just continued discussion, so that you're very aware of everything that we're aware of. All right. All right. And Brianna, you covering these?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go. I'll kind of go through it with you. Oh, sorry. I'm used to planning and zoning. I always like putting it down. I just want to make sure they're able to see, that everybody's able to see it.
When it turns, when that little one turns green, that's when you hit it, right? There you go.
There you go.
If you can't see the presentation, then go to the screen share.
Windows key P.
Yeah, see, it's because it's not the presentation. It's the actual website. Let me see here.
You should still be able to pull it up on Windows.
If you hit Windows key P and just say duplicate screen. It'll show us yours.
There you go. Got it. Thank you.
There we go.
The Microsoft voice. Okay. All right. Hi, council. Good evening. So first, I do want to apologize. That map that was presented, it was just a screenshot of what is capable in the GIS. And there's a link on the agenda report, and I wish I would have done a better job at explaining that before I sent that out. But there is a link on that agenda report, and it's located on the City of Castroville website. So everybody has access to this at the touch of their fingertips.
And this is on the public side?
This is on the public side. Yeah. We have a private side and a public side. And so this is located on the public side. And so last time, there was questions about the accuracy of the map. And so what I did is I went to the FAA and TechDOT, and I asked them to provide us with the GIS data for our airport layout map. And so they sent us the actual geo-technical data that we inputted into our own GIS system. And so this is in fact accurate. I understand what everybody is saying about the runway. But because it, but the reason why the runway extends off onto his property is because this is for the future. That's the airport data that we have, and that's the approved layout map that we have. So that's what we base our zoning off of, not the existing, but for the future.
Well, for the adopted.
The adopted airport layout map plan. Yeah. So the reason why I wanted to get this into GIS is because this has so many features that you can use at the touch of your fingertips. There was questions about, is it going to hit my property? What sections of my property? All of those things. And if you look, you can go to these base map features, and you scroll down, and there's one called parcels. And you can literally see every parcel in the city and outside the city, in the county as well, anything within Medina County. And you can go and you can click on that, and you can find what parcel that is. See, this says approach surface. But if you hit this arrow over, it'll see the property ID, who owns it, and, you know, mailing address, all that kind of stuff. So you can actually see within this map if your property is going to in fact be touched by the airport zoning. Yes, sir. So with that being said, the reason why it does say that there is going to be some consideration that council has to give as to where these zones are. Last time y'all saw that there were three zones, and it doesn't necessarily have to be like that. It can be three zones. It could be one zone. It could be five zones. It could be 12 zones. That's ultimately up to the city council and then also up to the county because they're going to have to be enforcing this as well. So far, any questions?
So what zones are depicted on there? If they're, if they're going to be establishing the zones, council, what, are there zones that are actually depicted on this map?
Not on this existing map because his name's Zhong Pei. He works for Hafen Associates, and he's the one that actually does all this for us. The map that was created with that, with the zoning ordinance, it's just, they're right, it wasn't accurate. So those zones are not actually depicted very clearly. And so he's working on trying to match those up right now, but it just takes time. So, yeah.
So what we're seeing, instead of being zones, what we're actually seeing is the classifications that the FAA has established based on our adopted future airport plan, right?
Yes, yes.
So the future airport plan shows the, the runway extending, was it 500 feet or 1,000 feet?
1,000 feet.
1,000 feet. So.
This way, right here.
So right now, we have a 5,000-foot air, uh, sorry, runway. The, the future airport would be 6,000. We've stated this publicly. I'm going to state it again. We can't do it without an agreement from the landowners. So it won't happen unless someone in the future that owns that parcel says, hey, we're allowed to extend. And the city still wants to extend it, and we're in that position. But be this, this is, so it's just a few, it's a future state that may or may not ever exist. But that is how the zone, because we've, we've gone through the process of approving this, and we've given it the FAA, and the FAA paid for that study. You know, we, we then need to adopt zoning that supports that. So what this shows is then, when you, when you lengthen that runway, there are other statutory, if you want to think about it that way, zones that exist. And there are things that are called, you know, the conical surface, and I'm not the one to be talking about this. I'm already out of my depth. This is where Bryce, you know, threw around some terms when he was here. But you, you have the surface, the main surface area, which is not just the runway, that, that box in red. It's a certain number of feet beyond the edge of the pavement, and then a certain number of feet on either, either end, right?
Yes.
North, south, east, and west. And that's what creates what they call the primary surface. So that, so if you were to like see an overlay from space, even if a 6,000-foot runway were existing, you'd see that box is slightly larger because all of that is, is.
It's like a building setback line for the runway. It's like you just don't want to put anything with it.
So these are all kind of FAA, if you want to think about it that way, lines on the map. These are not zones the city has created. These are, these are designations by the FAA. What we would recommend to staff is that we then use these, these base kind of features and create zones or create zoning that is compatible. And what we, what, when we talk about compatible, it's like, okay, so in the, what would be the runway protection zone? So if you can zoom in on that, our current runway protection zone is bounded by that road, the existing road. And that is property that we purchased from the farmer.
Right here, yeah.
Back when, I don't know, some, some years ago.
Yeah.
To gain control of the, the RPZ. But that runway protection zone would be increased to that new purple line just beyond it. That's where the, the, the new RPZ gets extended. And this is one of the concerns I know, like I met with Mrs. Eaton on the phone, and we talked about the property they currently have with Endura for sale. So just to kind of put this in context, you, you look at that, that eats up a good portion of that property. And listening to her tell it, that's exactly what happened to, I guess, her dad or someone else, whoever was farming, a relative of hers that was farming before. That's how the city ended up acquiring it. The exact same thing happened when they looked at establishing zoning and looking at that RPZ and the city having a desire to control it. Ultimately, they purchased it from the farmer in order to have that control. So we may be looking at, I emphasize may, may be looking at doing the same thing if we were to try and say that this is going to be an RPZ. And we're going to, we're going to zone that to the extent that nothing can be built in that area. It can be farmed, and that's what's happening right now. Our RPZ is farmed presently. But that's quite a bit of territory the city would have to, to go out and purchase.
Yeah.
And there's no requirement the city to do it. I don't, I don't think. This is where we're going to get in with probably Bryce, and he'll advise us on, on what standards, to the extent we are required to adopt any, you know, what standards we're actually required to. And that's been one of the consternations all along is that the FAA gives guidelines, and they don't force you to do anything. They just tell you, well, you know, you make your choices, and then we'll make our choices about what your airport can do in the future. And so if you don't take the appropriate steps, then, then they are what, if you don't take, if they don't, if you don't do what they deem to be appropriate protection of airspace and air, and airport operations, then they may close certain approaches or things of that nature, which is actually already happening right now. One of our approaches, we don't, we aren't able to have because we have trees on the end of our runway that are too tall. And so that approach is not available to pilots. If the trees come down, then, then we are, at least if they're shortened.
Yeah, it's just that they're not available at night because they can't see them. It's, they have to be able to see them to fly into that runway. Yeah.
So that's a, just an example.
Councilman Dyer?
The, the extension of the runway protection zone looks like it goes into that 25 acres that's part of Alstition Oaks, which 25.5 acres, the square box where the arrow is right now.
That's correct.
Looks like you're losing almost a third.
That's correct.
The ability to build anything in there, which seriously impacts the plan for Alstition Oaks. And that plan's already been approved.
On the other side of 90.
No, they have the.
It's, it's a great choice, yeah.
Everything below that line.
Has it been plotted?
No, it hasn't been plotted.
Yeah. So that, it, I mean, when you say the plan's approved, we're aware of what their plans are, but they haven't been, it hasn't been plotted. So the plat's the actual approval. It's kind of like your subdivision plan right now. They have a subdivision plan. Our thoroughfare expectations have changed since they adopted their, their original subdivision plan. Now we're looking for interconnectivity, and we're going to ask them to connect their roads to the Kingfish roads. And so that's good. They're going to have to change their subdivision plan to do that.
Well, I don't want to get high centered on this. The fact is that we've got things that are encroaching on people's property, and we have to. I think that what we've got to do is let's work with our, with Bryce, with our consultants to understand, is this actually the, the absolute minimum required by, by TechDOT Aviation?
There is, can I just clarify? Because there is, that's the whole thing, is there's not a minimum required. They just say you have to have on the books, and you have to create those standards or so. And if you don't meet those standards, then that's when they pull back grants and funding and all those things. They don't give you a minimum. Say, there is not a standard. They just say, this is what you should be protecting. Because they give you the capability to protect your own city. They won't want, they don't want to be the person to come in and tell you what to do. They want you to make that decision for yourself.
But I think that we have some options here. So I, I really would like to, and I don't want to get high centered on this.
Yeah.
Because again, this is, this is a problem because we have one thing aspirationally on the airport. The other thing is encroaching on property rights and a potential liability to the city either way. And so I think that let's find out what, what our recommendation from the airport, from the airport board, from the airport management, yourself, from city staff, what is your recommendation on how to deal with this? Maybe it's reducing the RPZ. Maybe it's, I mean, we have many different options. Let's come up with a recommendation, talk to council about it, and then we'll go talk to the property owners directly, see how that impacts them. See if there is a way that we are able to work out something. And if not, then we've got a decision to make. Where, you know, where are we, where are we hitting with this?
So prior direction was to, to look at the new Bronfels code because it was very minimal. And they haven't had any adverse action by FAA yet, and so we feel like that's maybe a good code to follow. So i- if it's, listening to what you just said, what we will do is look at the new Bronfels code and look at this, and now utilizing this, this map, and then try to overlay what the new Bronfels code was put in place.
I think we also need to look at options. If we're encroaching on people that don't want to be encroached on, then that's just picking a fight with your neighbor. And I know that personally is not a good idea. It's not a neighborly thing to do. So I think that we just need to come up.
Would you rather see us, I mean, would you, at, at that point?
We need to look at the options. The options are overlay, you're, you're doing the due diligence. You're doing the right thing. But I don't want to take the personal element out of this because we are impacting somebody. We're impacting the airport. We're impacting the neighbors. We're impacting people that are in our community. And so it's looking at, this is why I wanted to slow roll this. I think everybody's in agreement. We slow roll this and understand what the implications of any of these decisions are and have a conversation with the people that it impacts.
Well, let me ask you this, and I want to ask this for, for the entire council.
Yeah, thank you.
One of the things that's driving this, and I, I'm just going to be candid from my own perspective. It would make sense that you would need to extend, extend your zoning in concert with your adopted airport plan. But when we did that airport plan, I'm just speaking for myself, I was a little bit naive about what that, what the impact would be to our zoning, immediate zoning? Because I was thinking, well, that's a future issue. If we end up, you know, buying the property and extending the runway at some point in the future, well, then we'll deal with it then, right? And, but yet, we're being confronted with that now. You know, one of the things that we can do, I believe, we can go back to KSA and say, look, we like the plan. We like the use of the airport, but the 6,000-foot runway, we want to, we want to reconsider that. Because we, you know, that, one, we don't think it's very realistic. Two, you know, we don't think it's ultimately needed. Is that, I'm, I'm saying that? I'm not saying that y'all are saying that. I'm saying, is that an option? Is that, is, is that, is that something you would like us to try and pursue?
I would like to say that extending that runway south toward the river is going to involve a tremendous amount of landfill.
Right.
Because the ground is falling off there to break it, right? You can have 30 feet of fill at the south end of the 6,000-foot runway. Plus, you're going to need to do at least a three-to-one slope in every direction, which will take another 100 feet in all directions. So it's only marginally feasible.
Yeah, and I, I think we're aware of that. When we looked at it, we, we were aware of the topography and, you know, but it was still on the plan. That's why I'm saying, I wonder if this is, how realistic 6,000 feet was.
Why do we need it? What, what is the need for a 6,000-foot runway? Nobody's ever discussed that with us.
Yeah, they did talk about that. I don't think it's bad to do it aspirationally, but I think that it's prudent to look at doing it aspirationally, leaning it on the aspirational books, just so that future councils know that this is a possibility. But set up our zoning as it stands today. But I think that's a decision that we need to make after we go through this process. I think the process is important, finding out what that looks like, finding out how FAA is going to react to that, finding out how the neighbors are impacted by that. We might be able to find a compromise, and we might not. And so if we can't, then we need to look at, how can we be good neighbors here? And, and if we need to reduce that, that aspirational thing because it would have such a negative impact, then I think we look at that.
I, I think we should.
Could we go down the line?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry. I'll start over here with Tina.
All right. For the airport advisory board, they have a representative that is one of the landowners, Mr. Lang's son. He could get the input from the land. I, I think we need to see what the airport advisory board can find out for us. Because they'll have all the history of what the aspirations for this longer runway was and everything. And Mr. Lang could inquire to his neighbors and everybody around and bring that input to the board. And then the board can bring it up here to the council. That way, we can find out.
Well, I, I can speak to the longer runway. So the rea, the rea, the reason we're looking at 6,000 feet, it was both 6,000 feet and widening it because I think it's currently 75 feet, and they wanted to go to 150 feet wide. And it has to do with two, two things. One, it doesn't change, it's like looking at the maximum runway length and type that would serve without changing the classification of the airport. So the classification of the airport stayed the same, but it would allow for a greater variety of planes and primarily business-type, small business jets. So this wouldn't be commercial airliners by any stretch, but like small business jets to be able to land. Right now, their insurance, most private insurances will prevent most of those classes of airplanes from landing. Some of them do it because they do it anyway.
5,001 feet meets the insurance requirement for commercial jets.
Yeah, the 75-foot.
5,001 feet. That's why we extended it to meet that insurance requirement. Those jets could land here now. But my question is, what do we get by making it another 500 or 900?
But that was my, I'm just, I'm just clarifying. That was my understanding. Insurance was part of it because of the width. Because 75 feet is not wide enough, is what I understand. So it's the width and the length. And the length opens it up to all the different categories of planes that fall in our category of, of airport. That's the way it was explained. I'm not trying to play.
So I don't want, just in the interest of time, I think that this is something that is in the airport master plan. We can go through this and look at it in depth another time.
And that is on our website.
But I think that this is something, if you have individual questions, I would encourage you to reach out or email, and let's get those answered. They were in previous meetings, and they were in the airport master plan to understand some of the implications of that. The bottom line is that we're, we're trying to look at, how do we make things safe for everybody? How do we make it a viable airport without, you know, I think that, I think that we just, I don't want to get hung up on talking about the airport master plan here because what we're talking about is the implications of zoning, right? All right. Anything else? Councilman Martinez?
No.
All right. Councilman Carey?
I've asked, I've stated what I thought. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman King?
Nothing.
Councilman Murs?
First, I, I look forward, you said that they were working on getting the zones from the last time we saw this overlaid onto this. I look forward to seeing that. And I'll, I'll just out myself here. I'm probably one of four or five lots that are actually landing in the, in the purple zone there.
Right here, uh-huh. Some right here.
Yeah.
Oh, you are.
And I'm not, I, since the extension's off the far side of the airport, it probably isn't going to change my outlook either way. I'm probably never going to get my finished garage. But I, I would really like to see the difference of what these zones look like with the proposed airport that we don't have versus the current airport that we do. Because when we apply the zoning, we're going to go through either way and declare a lot of stuff incompatible. Or non-conforming, sorry. And when you're saying it's non-conforming, fundamentally, you're saying these two things are incompatible. But if what's incompatible is what people already have and use, and an airport that doesn't exist, I think we should really defer to what does already exist and people use, if possible. And for starters, I think that means making sure we look at both the future possible airport and the implications of the current one.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dyer?
I'm very concerned about the impact of that red line, reducing that 25 acres by almost a third. That is the area where the developer intended to put the retail grocery store. And if you take a third of it away, there won't be enough space, which means you won't get a grocery store. So that's really a concern to me.
Absolutely.
Unless we lessen the parking requirements.
Great. All right. So are we clear about moving forward?
Yeah, I think so. What I heard from, I want to be clear with council too. What we will do is explore what the new Bronfels code would look like. We will look at that as applied to this adopted airport master plan. So what, what does that code look like overlaid on this, which is basically what Zhong Pei's already working on.
Yes, because that's the one that Bryce did, and Bryce based his zoning that he already provided off of that new Bronfels language.
What we would need to do, and I just kind of forgot how much work we're going to put into this, because we, we. to put into this, because we don't want to, we really don't want to create two, like, maps. But what we need to do is look at, to Councilman Murs' comment, what would the existing airport as it exists today, what would that same zoning look like overlaid on top of it? So we'll have to figure out, we'll be creative and talk to Bryce about that. And then what it sounds like we probably need to do is go back and also talk to the Airport Advisory Board, and talk about the 6,000 feet and about the plan, and, you know, what is their level of support or concern if the city were to say, you know what, we think, the plan's good, you know, there's a lot of growth at the airport, the plan contemplates, all the additional hangars, et cetera. But what do they think about just leaving the runway as is, or potentially widening it but not lengthening it? I mean, there's probably several discussions we can have there. I have a feeling I know what they're going to say, but I want to, yeah, I want to let them say it first. And then we'll have to see, you know, where the council, whether the council and the airport agree with each other, right?
Okay.
Is that, is that the plan? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. We will do that.
We're going to look at the new Bronfels code overlaid with the current airport and with the Airport Master Plan.
Correct. And we'll bring that to you so you can see that. And we'll do a little better job of when we get this out. Again, I want to be clear, when we, when we're ready to actually make a decision, we will make sure that all the stakeholders know. We, as staff, we know that we're just talking through things, and we're going to be in this probably for a little while longer, it looks like. So, but we'll still, so you'll see it on the agenda several times, but know that when we, when this is like getting close to adoption, we're going to make y'all aware, we'll have a public meeting. I know that that's the wishes of this council, and we'll ensure that we do that.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And also, go look at the GIS, there's a lot of cool things on here. You can look at the historic properties, all this stuff, so, electric features, everything, so.
Are the electric features on the public case?
Some of them.
Yeah, some of them, not all of them, but like where the main lines are at, I think the main transformers, a few things here and there, sewer lines, water lines, the historic, the 1969 where all those historic homes are, there's a lot of things on here that you just have to drop down all the tabs and just look through it, so.
All right, thank you, Randall. All right, next item is public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony and comments from members of the public regarding amending Chapter 106 Traffic Engineering, specifically amending Chapter 106, Article 5 Parking, revising locations on commercial vehicle parking. This went in front of planning and zoning first, correct?
Correct. And you've got that, in your summary, for this, agenda summary for this item, you have the recommendation from planning and zoning. Now, this is not notice for action?
No, the next item is just discussion on the public hearing.
Okay, but there's-
Strictly a vote.
Oh, yeah, so there's-
Oh, I'm so sorry, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:56. Okay, so if you'll explain to them-
Yeah, just clear, so what we're looking at is revising the city's code that prohibits commercial, overnight commercial parking in several locations. And we want to add some of the commercial streets that are now in the Alsatian Oaks development to that list. And we anticipate that once the Dickerson property develops, we'll end up having to add those as well. We also anticipate that the UDO, the code rodeos tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the American Legion Hall, and again on Thursday, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. So please come, put in your two cents. But part of that UDO process will be to develop, this is kind of a Band-Aid approach, P&amp;Z recognizes the Band-Aid approach, the UDO will develop the code that will apply to the entire city without having to do Band-Aids along the way, hopefully.
Does that mean we have to wait for the UDO in order to-
No, so tonight, there's no action, because we don't have the ordinance to present to you, but this is a discussion item only, first it's public hearing and then the discussion. But no, what we're going to bring to you is an ordinance adding the commercial streets, and it's, I think, two commercial streets that are being added.
Southern, Southern Oak and Alsatian Oaks Boulevard.
Yeah.
They go underneath where you have Tunder Parkway.
Okay. Yeah, there is a draft ordinance included in your items, you can kind of review what the draft ordinance is going to look like.
That's in-
Number 11.
Yeah, the next item, good. You're still in a public hearing.
Great. Any questions, comments? You can talk during the public hearing, it's all right. Okay. All right, hearing none, we are going to close the public hearing at 6:57. Next item is discussion on proposed changes to Chapter 106, Article 5 Parking, revising locations on commercial vehicle parking.
This is just for your feedback, if there's any changes that you want made to that draft, if there's any additional areas that you'd like to see, P&amp;Z, we talked about, some of our areas around town, they felt like this was enough for now.
Scott, you covered what their position was fairly well. They recognized this as a, as a temporary fix Band-Aid, and that it would definitely need to be expanded as development occurs. I did want to reiterate that the developer, and I think we mentioned this at the last council meeting, that the developer had put in some no parking signs along Southern Oaks that were not ours. So it is in his best interest, and it would be a blessing to him if we were to pursue this.
And the reason that we're pursuing this is safety to the street with the 18-wheelers that are parking out there. Sometimes they're fully loaded, they drop down their jacks, they drive their thing out, and the point load on that can easily damage the roads. And we're having enough problems with our roads as it is. It also creates a safety issue as they're lining up, with this being the main entrance into Alsatian Oaks, with residential traffic going through there, it's just, it's a safety issue, and it's an ultimate cost to the, to the people of Casterville that we're trying to avoid. So that's why we're targeting this one specific area, because we don't want it to cost us in money or lives. Okay, so we'll start over here with questions, comments, Councilman Dar.
I'm very happy with what they've done, and I look forward to being able to vote on the change to the ordinance as soon as possible. I will support it.
Thank you. Councilman Murs?
I like the proposed change to this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilman King? No, no questions. Councilman Carey?
I support my fellow council members' perspective at this point.
Councilman Martinez?
It's a good Band-Aid. Like you said, we got to do something, but we got to build to make sure it's covered for the future.
Great.
That's bigger than a Band-Aid, it's a question to have.
Yeah, right here.
All right, so no action on this item. Are we, you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
You did close the public hearing, right?
Yes, at 6:57.
Next item is a consider, and actually, I'm going to take action off of here, and I'll tell you why. We really appreciate the fact that people are applying for this, and we want to make sure that everybody gets the chance to introduce themselves. Bruce Alexander had sent to us a letter that we'd read last time. Marcus Fuentes also sent us a letter, and I'd like to read that one. And then we have Ed, who's also applied, so I wanted to give everybody a chance to be heard. We do have, and just to be clear, we have one full position, and we have two alternate positions. So there's plenty of, right now, we have three applicants. Looks like all three can be put onto there in one fashion or the other. We just want to make sure that we're very careful about, you know, giving everybody the opportunity.
I've got a question.
Yes, please.
I think Mr. Fuentes should make his decision, and do whatever he's going to do with, he can't be on these two boards.
Right.
So I don't think we should bring his action forward until he makes the decision and does it. And then we can vote on his request.
Well, it is our policy-
Perhaps we could expand on what he's talking about, since they don't have it patented.
Absolutely. I'm going to back up for a second. Our policy is that we review applications in one meeting, and then we make a decision in the following meeting. And because we have additional applicants, we want to make sure that everybody has a proper chance to be heard and to, to apply for these. We appreciate the fact, I mean, it's nice that we're having enough applicants that will fill the entire board. Sometimes we struggle to do that, and that's one of the struggles that we have on zoning board of adjustments. And this is what we're talking about here. So Marcus Fuentes has applied for planning and zoning. He is currently on the zoning board of adjustments, and he can't be on both. And if he comes off of the zoning board of adjustments, then we no longer have a quorum, and that creates an issue. And so we have to work this stuff through. So that's why we're looking at this. We want to make sure that everybody has the chance to express their desire, their qualifications, why they want to do this, and how they can help out the city. So that's, that's why we're going in these terms. So what I'd like to do now is let's, I'll read, if you're all right, I'll read Marcus's application, and then Ed Esquivel can just present what everybody else has put in writing. All right, so, and then obviously, if Marcus still doesn't want to get on there, we have to figure out how to deal with the zoning board of adjustments. So this letter reads, "Members of the City Council, I would like to express my regret at not making it tonight, as I was called in for a work emergency, and I do not believe I would make it back in time, so I asked Mrs. Howe to read these few words." Howe, you want to read it?
Give me the reading.
You read it.
You can. I'll give you-
My name is Marcus J. Fuentes. I reside at 1311 Houston Street, two lots where I raised and where my parents reside at this time. I have lived here for 46 years and take pride in being a resident of our city of Casterville. I hope to follow in my father's footsteps and serve on this board I've applied to. Like him, I want to see the city thrive and be welcoming to all while maintaining our small-town charm. I currently sit on the zoning board of adjustments and realize I'll have to step down to be on this board of planning and zoning. I was also on the Parks and Recreation Board for some time, serving along our current mayor for a little bit. That is a little bit. Being part of the zoning board of adjustments, we had to follow the ordinances set forth and realize the complexity of our ordinances, and now with the UDO in play, would like to be a part of our growing city. So I ask the City Council to please have the courage and trust in me to sit aside the P&amp;Z members to serve the city the best I can." All right. And then we have Ed Esquivel?
How are y'all doing? Y'all ready?
Yes.
I just jotted down some of my thoughts. If not, I'll go on, and I don't know, I know some of y'all, and y'all know that I like to talk sometimes, and I will go on. But my name's Eduardo Esquivel Jr., a lot of y'all, everybody just calls me Ed. I currently reside at 201 Pear Street with my wife and two daughters. I'm currently employed by the Department of Homeland Security Customs and War Protection as a U.S. Border Patrol agent for the last 23 years. Apart from being a Border Patrol agent, I'm also an immigration law instructor at our academy, I'm a field training officer, I served as an EMT for eight years with the Border Patrol. I'm also an FAA licensed commercial drone operator with the Border Patrol. Even though we've only lived in Casterville since 2020, we've been part of this community since 2015, when we enrolled our daughters in St. Louis School. In preparing to transition our family from the next phase of growth in education, this included going from private to public schools, we knew Casterville and Medina Valley was where we wanted to be. Having worked in a rural area for the last 23 years, I've been able to live in small towns most of my adult life, including Cattula, Dilly, Somerset, Lidl. People are moving in droves to small towns, including Casterville. Everyone wants a little taste of our small-town living. This comes with a price. I've witnessed firsthand what uncontrolled development and population booms can do to a community when the Eagle Ford oil boom happened in Cattula. While some of this did bring some good to the community via tax revenue, job opportunities, and other economic value, it also created some havoc within the community. As I'm starting to enter the tail end of my career with the U.S. government, I've been thinking of other ways to continue to serve my community, and in this open slot, opened up the P&amp;Z Committee. As I ask you to consider extending me this opportunity to serve on the P&amp;Z, I'm not going to pretend I'm a planning and zoning guru, because I'm not. I'm fully aware that others in consideration, like Mr. Alexander, has a wealth of knowledge when it comes to city ordinance and zoning. I've heard him speak at P&amp;Z public comment meetings, and was very impressed with his knowledge and experience as it relates to different issues and impacting our community. I call Marcus Fuentes on my, I have him on my speed dial, and he's usually the first person I contact when I need some quick info with anything concerning Casterville. However, I believe that I can bring to the table, what I can bring to the table is perhaps some fresh eyes and a different perspective as a newer resident to Casterville. I think what some might y'all call is a friendie. I've lived in communities with uncontrolled development and no clear vision for the future. I do not want that for Casterville. I'm interested in preserving the character of our residential neighborhoods, improve the quality of development, and have a place at the table when these situations arise. So your consideration is greatly appreciated, and I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great. All right, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Esquivel?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for being willing to serve. Again, it's, it's a good problem to have a bunch of, a full board. All right.
So I do have a concern, though.
Yes, please.
We set up the rule that when applications are submitted, they'll be reviewed at one meeting, decision made at the next meeting. And we've had times before to where people, one person submit for a board, and a couple others submitted at the next meeting, but we still made a decision on that one individual. I think it would-
I don't know that we did that.
Yeah, we have on a couple of them. And so I think to follow suit and do it like we've said we're supposed to do it, since we already had Bruce Alexander's application at the last meeting, we should technically make our decision at this meeting, if we're going to follow our rules that we established.
I don't agree with that. I think we should do it the other way, but this is, this is a council decision. And so if council is in support of that, I definitely am not going to fight that. I think that it's, I think it's always prudent, again, if things need to be done in an emergency situation, absolutely. I don't believe in analysis paralysis, but I do believe that we should do things very methodically. If council believes that that is the right way to do it, this time, I would encourage us to change it for the next time. I'm okay with that.
You can do that.
Can I say? Yeah, please. This isn't about, so this isn't about keeping anybody off of anything. Again, we have three slots that are open, and three slots will be filled, and we have three applicants for those slots. And so we're trying to be, to be respectful of everybody and not to bully our way through this, please, please. Councilman King?
Yeah, I, you know, this is a self-imposed rule.
Right.
It's not set in law.
It is not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance. And it's because in the past, the city has, the council has made some decisions that probably after the fact realized that, you know, we were hasty because somebody just said, hey, I'll be on it. I don't even remember the specifics of that, but I remember that was where it was suggested we do it this way. I'd like to get input from, from citizens. And by giving it a space till the next meeting, I get input from citizens, and not just one to show up at the council meeting.
So stay now.
So, no. No, I'm sorry.
And so I don't mind, it's not a rush-rush thing, so I don't mind, you know, waiting and getting feedback. And so again, it's not, I'm not, you know, if you all want to vote tonight, fine, but otherwise, I think we can make better decisions when we think about things and talk to constituents about the things.
Councilman Carey?
Well, I had, it was my understanding that that was pretty much our operation policy to review one meeting and have, and, 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 and,
Great. I have a motion in a second.
There's a point of clarity from the city secretary?
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure on this, on the, it's a full board position. This position goes off June 24th. All the boards except the H L C, their terms are June, uh, you know, that year. Uh, I don't know if you want to leave it as the, as such and have him come back and put another application in. It's only three months.
Two months.
Two, three months, or if you want to, uh, decide whether or not you want to go ahead and extend it to.
You can, you can make this a two-year appointment.
Yes.
Or you can have it expire in June.
Twenty-six. Okay, I'll amend my, uh, motion to make it a two-year because it makes no sense.
So it'd be expiring June of 2025.
Yes.
It's not two years.
It's not, that's why, is it 26?
But.
That's why I was clarifying.
Yes.
Okay, 26.
June of 2026.
There you go.
Second.
That's why.
All right.
Second submittable.
I have a modified motion, modified to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right. Great. Uh, so we will talk about the alternate positions in the next city council meeting. Love to have you back, uh, for the next one and we'll have hopefully Mr. Fuentes connect as well. Thank you. All right. Great discussion. Uh, next item is, uh, discussion on proposed drainage projects. We already talked about this, but Scott, if you'll take it up from here.
Say it one more time, sorry. Uh, on drainage?
Discussion on proposed.
Yeah, yeah. So we did kind of cover that in my, uh, presentation. I don't know that I have much more to add at this point other than to say that we need to probably schedule a public meeting for the drainage and that's another item on this agenda. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think, I'm, I'm trying to think if there's anything I want to elaborate on based on, more than what I said earlier. I think what I said earlier is sufficient.
Well, I think what you said, uh, about Garcia Creek is it may not be as, um, high on a priority in terms of impact, um, like flooding impact, but it's higher on the priority because of potential cost impact of not doing it. A full failure would be substantially more expensive.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate you saying that because that's, wasn't stated out loud, but absolutely. So one of the reasons that staff would recommend going, moving forward with the Garcia Creek improvement is exactly that. It's because that's, that was an investment made 20 years ago. That's where all that money was spent. That's what you just paid off in 2023 and to see that get wasted would be, you know, tragic, right? So we want to make sure we, we, we repair that before, before truly fails. And I, Mayor, I apologize because you're absolutely right. That, that probably needs to be said out loud. Um, so, because it's not the highest on our priority. We, we, the highest on our priority is obviously the Athens Street Drainage, some of the stuff to the south. That's what we'd really like to fix. Uh, but the fact of the matter is that the drainage fee that we currently, we all pay as utility payers is $5 on our, on our, um, bills. That will only cover a certain amount of debt issuance. That debt issuance I'm going to get with, uh, SAMCO to kind of define exactly how much that's going to cover, but I would estimate that it's in the 1.7 to $2 million range that we could go issue. And that's probably going to be about the cost of this project. It might come in a little bit less and we'll have a little bit of extra funds to do some kind of drainage with. We know that we've got some barge improvements and other things that we could, we could spend some of that money on. Um, but it's inadequate to, to cover what is the Athens, uh, project, which is a, now I can't remember, but 10 or 14 million dollar project is what they were looking at doing. Um, and that will, that will necessitate hopefully getting a grant of some kind. Um, either that or a very low interest loan from some state agency or something along those lines. So we'll continue to explore how we're going to fix the drainage to the south. Um, but this would just be for Garcia Creek based on, based on exactly what you said.
And the sidewalls, I mean, are caving in.
Yeah.
Really bad to where, I mean, you got, we've got trees already sliding into it and everything and that gets a lot of water. We get good rains because it's already also the drainage coming off the hill off of 90 and it comes down in there to get to Medina River. It, it flows a lot.
So we expect to bring something to you pretty quickly about that, about Garcia Creek.
If you think about the other impact of that, it would cut. I believe that cuts river bluff off to just one inch.
Yes, that's correct.
Right? Which presents a safety issue.
That's a problematic, yeah.
Okay. So there is no action on this one?
I guess you could go down the hill.
Discussion. Exactly, you can go down.
That cul-de-sac at the end of your.
Oh, God, don't go there.
Councilmembers?
Oh, sorry.
We're in the middle of this.
I thought you said members and not my name.
Merge.
I'd just like to bring it up since I know people are going to ask, um, what if any plans are there to address drainage problems in Country Village right now? I believe we're going to receive some drainage improvements as part of NP Homes.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's the only thing that's planned right now. So when we did the street project, we did that, those street improvements was in mind, you know, with drainage in mind. So, um, we worked with the engineer to make what improves we could when we, when we did those streets. Uh, the remainder of the improvements that are currently planned are all related to NP Homes. I don't have a timeline. Um, I think he's kind of waiting on the market to a certain extent. Now, the pit was approved, oh wait, no, no, we're, we're going through pit, I get it because we've got so many going. I, we're going through the pit process for that 35 acres.
Development agreement was approved, the pit was not yet.
Right. Um, so when he pulls, and I think that pit process will start when he starts paying his bills. Um, but yeah, the, the improvements go along with that. There's really two primary ones. Uh, one is the, uh, creek bed, if you think about that way, that, that runs between old Country Village and new Country Village, that, that whole area. Um, that would be restored to its original design. And then on the property, on the 35 acre property, there is a, if you think about the, um, southwest corner of that property, that'll have a drainage improvement put on it and then right across the street from it, along Providence, there is going to be an improved, a drainage improvement that will, uh, take care of drainage on Providence and then take it across and, and improve under 471, uh, that, that whole drainage system will get upgraded if we think about it that way. So all that's going to be done, some of it's on property, the on property stuff, he's taking, doing it at his own expense. The stuff that's off property, so Providence and the creek will both be done, um, basically on a, on a contribution basis to the city.
Okay. And so since both of those are tied up in a development, in an ongoing development agreement, there shouldn't be any expectation of the city taking action on that in the near term?
Well, the developer's actually going to.
Changes with that developer.
Yeah. Developer, well, the development group's approved. The developer will be the one doing the work and, uh, the engineer has already done all of the design work for it. Um, like I said, I, I think we're just waiting for him to kind of pull the trigger to start. And unfortunately, I don't have a date. I will, I'll go ask and kind of reconfirm. I did talk to him recently, um, the developer that is, and just try to get an idea of what his timeframe is. Um, because right now I don't, I don't know when he's going to start these projects. Hopefully sometime soon.
If you follow up, David, because I guess I got confused here, but you said Country Village people are concerned about what's going on in this and this is the one up above Country Village?
Well, so this just says proposed drainage projects, which is why I'm bringing it up here.
Oh, okay.
Um, but there are a few areas in Country Village. The, the drainage has been quite filled in over time with silt off of the hill with the new development. And so when it rains, there are a number of houses which will get water right up to their backs.
And, and the new development you're talking about is Country Village.
Country Village Estates.
Right.
Up to Mars.
And we're talking about the.
And that's all been finished.
But the, the.
No, we cleaned out.
We're discussing is NP Homes.
But what has been finished, there is some work that was done, um.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, but it was primarily east of that crossing, on the east side towards Alstation Oaks. On the west side, I think there was just kind of minimal work done. It wasn't.
Right.
We didn't restore it to its original.
But, but nothing in our development agreements have anything to do with this issue.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
In NP Homes, one of the things that, that we included and we were, we successfully negotiated for was that he would do that work out of his pocket.
Oh, so he'll go in there and deepen that channel.
Uh-huh.
So to be clear, we are working with the different developers.
Yeah.
As they have negative impact, it's to help them have positive impact. So having them do some of the drainage improvements that we needed anyway, some of these, um, are adjacent and impactful with that development and so that's what we're going to do. Well, very interesting. Appreciate it. I, I got a little about that. Yep. Okay. Good. You guys figuring out?
Good.
Okay. No questions? Okay. And so what we were talking about with these, um, the proposed drainage, oh, I'm sorry. I started here and I, see, that's why I start at the ends. Yeah, please go ahead.
Are we going to submit an application for the Athens Street Drainage Project to the Flood Infrastructure Fund in accordance with this document you put in here?
Yes.
So it'll have the entire, I don't remember exactly if it was six to 10 million or 10 to 12 million.
It was like 10 to 12.
But that's going to go in as an application.
Yes, there's going to be two, I, I've got to confirm when that, there were two different projects, right? There's, there's three projects in total that we could go ask for, but they score the projects, the, the, the group that, that's, I don't know if it was Texas Water Development Board? I think it's Texas Water Development Board. They have a scoring criteria. Um, ideally you'd have a one, you'd score one. Our projects, when they do the preliminary scoring to see where they score, one's like a point four six, one's a point three six, and one's like a point one eight. Uh, I don't remember which ones were which. I know Athens was, was, was higher. I think Constantinople is the one that scored low. Those. Yeah, I'm sorry. So I think it was Naples and Athens that had the higher of those two scores, but if, ultimately they're going to try to evaluate, evaluate which ones are most likely to be funded. Um, and even though that, what, what we were kind of, what was explained to us over the phone, we had this conference, um, with the engineers, was that even though those scores don't sound great, the fact of the matter is that they're, you know, it, it's all competitive and on a competitive basis, they're actually pretty good. Even though what TD, T W D B would prefer to see, Texas Water Development Board would prefer to see a one, what they're likely going to get are going to be a bunch of scores in our range. And so, uh, they're going to put together a preliminary application for the two projects that they think are most likely to, to get funded.
Thank you. And the first one of that was Athens and the second one was?
Naples.
Naples.
It's Athens, Naples, and Lorenzo. Those are the three that they put together. Yeah. It, yeah. Talked about, there's kind of a, a directionality to, to the flows and it would make, you know, you want to do one project before you do the others. You prefer to do them sequentially, right?
Always do downhill.
There's some of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause of, yeah, don't kill somebody, that's true.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, let's move on to the next item and that is discussion and set dates for public meetings on drainage study, planning, development, managing growth. So the, the items here, it's really, we have a lot of things that are going on and we want to make sure that, um, there's, we have a, a number of people that come to the meetings, that listen to the meetings, that hear about the meetings. We want to make sure that we're doing things as openly as possible and sometimes it's just really hard to communicate that. And so I feel that it's prudent to have these discussions out in the open so that we get people up to speed. If they didn't make the exact, um, council meeting because they weren't paying attention, we have these dedicated ones to say, this is exactly what we're going to talk about. And so if you have a question about what's happening, what, uh, development is occurring around us, why we're doing the policies that we're doing, it's really to have that conversation as a very specific individual item that people know that they need to show up for.
I'm going to posit that, you know, you guys, we're doing these U D O. Tomorrow we're going to have a, a rodeo, the next day we're going to have a rodeo. I, from my perspective, I feel like that, that's how we're managing growth. We're trying to develop a code that addresses growth, that it sets the expectation the community wants to see as we grow to our east. Unfortunately, we are not going to stop, as long as here's, we don't own the land, you know, as long as the city's not in complete control, there, there's going to be growth because people are going to sell it to the highest bidder who's going to do what they want. Um, we are working with certain landowners to try to conservation and some other things to, to prevent growth to, to the degree that we can. Um, but realistically, growth is happening. I, I feel like that is your, your solution as a council for open meetings for, for growth is encourage your constituents to come to these U D O related, these unified development ordinance, subdivision planning, growth related, uh, meetings and, and here we're, because those are perfect opportunities to ask things like, well, what are you doing in the interim? We can, in those meetings, we can talk about, well, here's how we're leveraging development agreements, here's what we're doing, state law that, you know, within state law that allows, allows us to, to operate and, and negotiate to the benefit of the cities, citizens in the city, um, and, and the types of things we're doing. So I would argue that that's probably where that needs to happen, but again, I defer to you all as, as far as whether that's not.
I think it can happen both. You're absolutely right. It needs to happen in those forums, but that is the perp, it's kind of like with us on an, an agenda item, when we go too far off of that agenda item, it kind of, it muddies the waters. So I'd like to keep that as talking about the ordinances themselves, the impact of the ordinances and the other is just to educate because I would guess that a lot of people don't know how much land is owned by developers right now, how much land is being marketed to developers right now, how much land is for sale and where it is and how that impacts them and some of the decisions that we're making. You know, the, the question came up about the pit. Um, the presentation that we got in the last council meeting, I started digging into that and it actually makes a ton of sense and going through the actual numbers and the impact to the people, the impact to the homeowners, uh, the pits actually make the, the homes, uh, more affordable for the homeowners and it's money that would be going, it's, it's money that would be going to the developers or to the builders or something. You take out part of their, if you reduce their cost, you reduce their profit margin and so it actually is better for the people that are buying it. But it's also looking at the, the lack of impact, of negative impact on the people here so that growth pays for growth. And I don't think that everybody understands that. So I think that it's a good opportunity to have that conversation, have them challenge us with questions and concerns and to, um, to, to really, uh, have a, a two-way conversation. That's why I want it to be a town hall because in these meetings, it's much more specific and these meetings we can't have the open discussion.
Well, so let's talk about the scope of the town hall. So there's three things that, that kind of need to be talked about. One is the drainage that we're, you know, the drainage plans that were presented back in October of last year. Uh, the other is this kind of what are we doing to manage growth as a, as a community? And then the third is the sale of the gas system. So the gas system, um, is that right or was there another one? It was those three, right?
Uh, managing growth and the, why we're looking at the different, um, mechanisms for managing the growth?
Yeah.
Managing the growth, yes, you're right.
That's one. Gas system, two.
And drainage.
And drainage.
Because we had talked about drainage and we are not yet able to act on it, so I want to make sure that people understand that there is a plan in place even if we can't accomplish it right now. And about the gas.
Well, drainage is a citywide issue and you certainly focus on it citywide. The issues with that, with the three projects that we presented, they're all pretty geographic. So, you know, one of my thoughts is, let's not have five public meetings. I'd love to just have one. But again, I'll defer to you all and tell me what you think. Because muddying the waters and that, you know, based on your early conversations, you may not wanna do that. But certainly, we could have the gas system discussion and the managing growth discussion at the same time if you felt like that was appropriate. The plan for the gas system, we are working with two consultants on two separate issues related to our gas system. One is a capacity analysis to determine our ability to provide gas to the new subdivisions as they come on. That's one of the challenges Alstation Oaks faced early on is when they reached out to the city and then we subsequently reached out to CPS to say, can we have gas? CPS's response is, we don't know enough about the system to confidently say that you can have gas. But we think, we think we can serve your commercial area. That's it. And now Kingfish has come along and said, well, we want gas and we're in the exact same boat. So we're in the process of looking at a capacity analysis of the system. I'm waiting on a proposal. I don't know if it's $5 or $500,000. I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out and let you all know what that proposal looks like. What we, when we asked CPS to run it for us as our operator, it was $250,000. Now, since then, they, we are right now going through the process of entering all of our gas system data into GIS. And that should reduce the cost of that analysis considerably. And that was the main cost for CPS. They said that, well, we're gonna have to go out and audit your entire system and literally locate and find where stuff is. And some of that's gonna have to happen anyway. Because we have to verify that the data that we're putting in is accurate. We already know that, for instance, in our water system, if we go look at a water map, those lines are not where it says they are on the map. And so that's an issue. So we have to go, we have to make sure this, the GIS map is accurate. The other thing we're working on is our, the assessment the council put on staff, which help us understand what is the, what are the liabilities with owning the system? What are the options? If we were to own it, what would it cost? What are some different scenarios to managing that system? And I threw out kind of a worst-case scenario. And I know that, I exchanged an email with you. I don't know if you had a chance to read it this afternoon. You know, I threw out that $750,000 number. Now, part of that's a very real number, I think. $250,000 to have staff. That's a three-person crew that goes out and fixes the gas leaks. But there's, there could be an opportunity to dual-train in the future. To get people trained up right away, it's not gonna happen. We don't have the people on staff that are certified. So we're gonna have to go out and get those. So initially, you're gonna have that personnel cost potentially. But there's also potentially an outsource option. Maybe there's a hybrid option. You have a paid staff member and then outsource some others. So there's different, there's different hybrid kind of options for operating the system ourselves that we need to look at and cost out. And then there's, what would it look like if we sell it? And what is that value? And then what are, as I stated earlier, what are the liabilities? If we maintain it and keep it, what challenges might we have? One of the big things that's facing the city is that as of, I don't know how many years ago, but six or seven years ago, we were put under a requirement by the Railroad Commission, which is the board or the state agency that oversees gas systems, to replace our steel lines and to replace a 10% of those steel lines on an annual basis. The city had not been doing that. And we should have been doing it, I think, for at least the last three or four years. We didn't, we didn't have a plan to do that. And CPS, as our operator, should have also, you know, they should have worked with the city and said, hey, where's your plan to do this? And this is kind of one of my fears and concerns that I brought to you all when I came on board, is I felt like there was nobody with their hand on the wheel on the gas system in a very real sense. We had a group that was coming out and doing brake fix, and that's CPS. And I don't wanna disparage them. They aren't the owners. They were operating it, but they weren't treating it as if they owned it. And the group that owned it, which was us, we weren't treating it very much like an owner either because we weren't, we were ignorant to what the rules are. And I'm saying we in the rural we, the city as a whole. So these are things that we were vaguely aware of that are coming into clarity for us now. And this is what that consultant will help us do. He'll help us define all of that and then present that to the public. So we look at a broad spectrum of options and liabilities, et cetera. So that everybody, everybody can make an informed decision. Do we sell it? Do we keep it? What should we do? Whether we sell, the only reason it's going to election, really, is because that's required by law. If we're gonna even consider selling it, we have to put it to the public. So that will probably be ready. Right now, our target date's the second meeting in April. If we can do it sooner, I'll get it to you sooner. But realistically, our plan is to present in like a presentation format, much like you've done in the past, to the council, what would be shared publicly. Then the public meeting would happen shortly after. We'll need to schedule that date. And that's part of what tonight's about. We'll need to schedule probably after the second meeting in April. And I don't have my calendar in front of me, but.
We've gotta do it before?
Election.
But before the, exactly, but before the election.
How far before the election? Is there a requirement, how far?
No, there's not. There's no requirement to have these public meetings. None whatsoever.
It's good to let people know.
It's just really good, it's really, makes really good sense to do it.
So the second meeting in April, of course, is the 23rd of April. And elections the 4th of May?
It is, but early voting starts before that.
Yeah, you know when early voting, voting is?
It starts, and I might have to go back over my calendar, I'm so sorry.
I think the 23rd.
Pardon?
I think it's like the 23rd or.
It starts on a Monday and it's either the 29th or the 22nd.
I'm asking her anything.
He go.
I know I'm not supposed to talk to you there, but.
Well, let's find out what that is and make sure that we've got it before there. And that way.
Yeah, I wanna say it's 29th, but.
Okay. So let's just make sure that we're scheduling it before that so that people can go in and be informed.
I think the early voting is gonna start before the city council meeting.
No, I think that we do this, if we need to do a specialty call. I don't mind doing the specialty call. I know it's a lot on staff and I apologize for that. But I think it's something that we do separate from a city council meeting.
That's if early voting starts before the 23rd. Is that what you're saying?
Well, let's figure out when the early voting is. Make sure that we're educating people with enough notice.
No, it doesn't start, it starts on a Monday.
No.
No, it's not.
22nd, April.
Yeah.
It's either the 22nd or the 29th.
Yeah, 22nd. The actual, actual election day is May 4th.
Okay, so let's just get it in as, if we need to do, I think it's good not to do it in a city council meeting, but a town hall meeting? Because that way we can have a good.
Well, the idea was to present to you all first. So you get to see what the public's gonna see if we can make corrections or additions or whatever. And then have a town hall meeting. Now, the public will be at that meeting, so they can chime in as well at that initial presentation. So the thought was to do it on the 23rd, but if early voting starts on the 22nd, then we could still keep the council meeting on the 23rd. But we wanna do what you're calling a public meeting, maybe the week of the 15th. Is that what I'm hearing?
Probably toward the end of the week, maybe Thursday.
Yeah, 18th is a Thursday.
Okay, so let's tentatively schedule it for that Thursday.
Thursday, the what?
The 18th.
18th?
Yep.
Do we still have time to get that on the, on next month's utility bill insert?
The newsletter?
Yeah, I believe so, because it's always. Dedicating a large section of that page to this public meeting would be appropriate.
Right, I agree.
Like a frequently asked questions from back, why?
Well, I meant just to say that there's gonna be a meeting.
Yeah.
This is the date and the time.
Yeah, I believe so. I'm trying to figure out when the bills actually arrive. But we do that at the first of the month. The newsletter gets prepared like at the first of the month.
Gets mailed on the 10th, I believe.
Yes, I wanna say, but it'd be very, very tight. Well, I say very tight. 10th and the 18th, it's eight days before.
But you could just put a notice in there and say.
Well, we can do an I-Info. And that's probably what we'll do.
And also I-Info, that's probably actually.
Do an I-Info, we'll do newspaper and we'll do the utility bill.
Is there any possibility of delaying the vote to a later date? Or is that something that's?
I wanna talk about that. I'm glad you mentioned it. Because one of the things that we're looking at right now, when we started this process of selling it, we had already reached out to other groups to see if we could find an operator. We reached out to West Texas Gas, we reached out to other gas utilities and said, hey, you know, CPS has been operating ours. Would you be interested in operating our system? And most of them, well, all of them said, no, but we'll buy it. But we don't wanna operate it. We have since reached out to, CPS gave us a list as their contract with us was coming to conclusion in March. They said, here's a list of all of our contractors. Those contractors have different, have varying ability to operate as your operator. And one of my concerns is, I don't think any of them would do the full operation like CPS was doing. In other words, all the Railroad Commission stuff. The audit, there's a financial audit that's involved. There's a number of things that are involved. But staff, right now, like, not this minute because I'm here, but we are working on looking at, is it feasible to have a Band-Aid approach for our operations through one of these contractors? And look at what that would look like. And then if we were able to do that and you all got, you know, preliminary information from this consultant and said, you know, we wanna give this more time, more due diligence. We'd rather call the election for November or, I don't know if you can for November or if it would be, have to be the May election. But we'll, do you know, can it be in November? November election?
As long as it's a uniform election, we could be in November.
Yeah. So we could potentially, potentially postpone this until November. So I have.
You can.
I know, but can you cancel it?
No. It's already done.
Never mind. I've been thinking through that, though, Herb. I've been like, okay, if we're able to come up with a solution.
Yeah, but never mind. Everyone here, that you tend to, if actually setting that public hearing.
Well, it's, it's public meetings. It's not public hearing.
Or assuming the public needs, so it's a little bit outside of our.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have said the.
Early voting is the 22nd of April.
Okay.
So the Thursday before that.
So April 18th would be the gas meeting. Do you want to try and do double duty with that meeting with something else or just leave that gas?
I would leave it just gas because there's already rumors and everything going around.
Okay.
Well, there's rumors about it all, but I think that, I think that each one.
Individual.
I think different people have different concerns about different things. And each one could be a very long topic. And, I mean, I know that the city council has been and staff have been very good about being willing to stay very, very late, but I don't wanna do that to all of the people. Most of them don't enjoy staying here for.
Well, the April 18th, that'll be just that item. So we can do a presentation. It, we can, you know, the meeting shouldn't be more than an hour and a half or so to get every, the presentation and comments. The drainage meeting, when it was originally proposed, the concept was to really kind of focus on Herb's area and maybe even do it at like the RV hall there in the park. And send out a notice. We can do a geographic I-Info notice to that group and invite that group out. My question is, do you still wanna do that? Or do you wanna open it up to a citywide drainage discussion?
I think we do both. I think we do I-Info because the biggest concern that I've heard is over in that area. The historical, and that's why this is such a high priority is because it has the most flooding impact. So I think that we do I-Info out to them. But then we also do an announcement to everybody else. Because it's something that impacts everybody.
So it would be a public meeting. And I think by its nature, it could be a public meeting. The only reason I say it could is depending on whether you're gonna have a whole council there or just one or two, you and Herb, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a.
I think we should do it because if you think about Garcia Creek, it also impacts River Bluff.
Is there an agenda item setting the date for a public meeting or the sale of the utility system?
It's just for information.
Can we set that date here if it's not on the agenda?
Well, what's the agenda language?
The gas system.
It actually said the dates without having the scope of the council. It was just like gas council.
That's what we just did for the gas system.
I know, but it wasn't agenda, that's why.
Oh, I didn't say gas, it didn't say gas here.
Well, it was planning, planning development and managing growth. So this is.
That's what I was encompassing then.
Sure. Well, it can also be under future agenda items, so.
I just wanna make sure normally our attorney there.
All right. So drainage meeting. Do we wanna do that at the RV park and then post it as a public meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? And then we'll do an I-Info to that geograph, that geographic area. So geographic area I'm saying is 90 South. That, everybody that lives 90 South.
Yeah, I think that's probably good. I mean, we could limit it just to District 5, but I think it's easier just to do it that whole, because pretty much everybody in that area is familiar with that.
Sheena has thoughts, I think.
Well, we're talking about putting it out as a notice to everybody. I don't know that we're ready to set that date yet. I think that we need to figure out when, when we can be ready for that.
I think we're ready. Honestly, I think we're ready to have the conversation about, I mean, we can do the same presentation that they did in October. That K-Freeze presentation.
And then add on to the financing part of it, the implementation part of it. So we add on that additional piece. Like how are we gonna actually, we needed to walk into, what are the highest priorities? Why are they the highest priorities? What are we doing to fix these highest priorities? So like, as long as we cover that, and I think that their presentation did a pretty good job of that. But I think that we need to go into the implementation, which is what we were supposed to do last October and we didn't do it. We were supposed to have that conversation last October and we just.
With the public, or you mean?
With the public, yeah. That's what we committed to.
I, I don't think the RV place would be big enough. And also to be given a presentation if we're gonna do slides, those graphs, whatever.
Braden Keller?
Braden Keller would be smarter. Like we did for Alstation Oaks and stuff like that.
I don't know that we're gonna have that much participation, but it's good to anticipate.
You never know.
Yep, yep, I agree.
All right. So I'll look at Braden Keller's availability. And then is there any particular month that we wanna try to aim to talk about this drainage issue?
I think it'd be prudent to wait until early May. That's okay? April is just busy.
Ask her if it's his district.
What do you think?
For which one?
The drainage.
We just have so much going on right now. I think that first week in May, second week in May, you think that's too long?
I'm gone for the most, from May the 6th to May the 21st. But I don't think you should not have a meeting just because I'm not there. Do whatever you wanna do.
Let's, maybe we try and shoot, what day is May the 6th?
Monday airport meeting. Yep.
So maybe we target the week before that.
We could do the week prior.
Third day before that?
The first week of May. It's first, second, and third.
There's the 29th and 30th.
I'm.
This is gonna be in the evening, right?
Yes.
I'm supposed to be watching, you see, and I'm supposed to be on Curtis?
When are you going?
I'm sorry, what? It'd be in the evening where people can attend?
Yes.
So I'll have to look.
3:00 in the morning.
What I'm gonna look at is that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the first through the third. Keep in mind, it's gonna, if we're trying to, if we're trying to do it at Braden Keller, then it really is gonna depend if they have any space available. I don't know how many to tell them, but I would suggest, you know, 60. Like a room that fits 60. And so that can be, that doesn't have to be the large stage area. It can be one of those other areas, which will make it, make it a little more flexible for us. So that'd be May 1st through 3rd.
And we actually had it in one of, not in the big stage room, when we had our Alstation Oaks done off. It was actually in one of the other rooms.
And that's, that's where some of the other groups, like AgriLife, Extension, they, a lot of times have their meetings in there as well.
Okay, so let's try and do May the 2nd if we can, May the 1st if.
Braden Keller. Again, I'm gonna defer to what their availability is. So seconds the preference, though?
I think second, Thursday, I think is typically easier than a Wednesday.
If I'm out of time, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'll be back Thursday night.
All right, let's try for Thursday night.
Right, so the 2nd.
Just make sure I'm not lying. Okay? May the 2nd. And then the growth.
Six?
Meeting.
Six to eight or what time?
Yeah, 6 to 8.
Paul, will you be back on it?
Yeah, I'll be in Hays County, I'll be on the second floor.
And if people can't make it by 6, they can make it at 6:30 or 7, we can reiterate. I think that's okay.
The April 18th meeting, the gas meeting, I'm gonna, I'll look to see if Braden Keller's available, but right now, I'm gonna plan on that being here.
Okay. I think that's fine. We just need to make sure that, like, kind of like before when we've had some things, making sure that we've got accommodations if we need to put people over. I don't think we will. But just in case, let's make sure that we've got overflow plans. Okay, and then the one for the.
Managing growth?
The development, the developments that are happening around town. I can actually do that presentation.
Good.
Yeah. Because you've got a lot on your plate.
Well, because I wasn't really sure what all of you wanted to see presented on that, so.
Well, I've already given a lot of these presentations. We've talked about a lot of these things individually over time. But I think it's just consolidating all of that into stuff that we've already covered. That's why I'm saying I can put it together because we've already covered it individually on these items. And we can talk about some of the challenges. We can talk about, you know, the, what our plans are, why we're approaching things. So we've talked about it also. I don't know. If it's okay, can I get back with you on how long it would take me to put that together? I think it's probably. I don't think we can do it before April. April is really busy. I think it's probably mid-May, into May kind of thing.
Yeah, that's good.
I know I'm putting a lot of extra meetings on. Sorry.
My council says we have to move over to the thirty, the thirty first, thirty fourth show.
Yeah.
Yeah, for budget.
Yeah, I did send that out.
On May?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the very end of May. It's the last week of May.
All right. If it's okay, let me come back with a proposal on the next council meeting. And just kind of figure out how long it's going to take to put together. Okay. Everybody good? All right, next item is staff reports. This we have Scott.
For this, I'll just ask, you know, what, what questions do you have? I don't. I did review them. There's some, I, I'll, I'll just note that there are a couple of changes to the formats. I know Mayor provided some feedback. I, I went ahead, when I responded to his feedback, I provided you all with the, the, not the first iteration. That was probably, what, number four, number five, I don't know, number six. We've been working on the finance reports to kind of fine tune this. But I wanted you to see kind of the, that cycle of creation, if you will. And we'll continue to refine and improve those. I am, I'm going to meet with John Naren in Hondo sometime soon. He's really adopting A I and the use of, use of A I. And I know you've talked a lot about, the mayor's talked a lot about leveraging A I for analytics. So anyway, I, I plan on meeting with him to talk about the practical uses that he's putting that to for the city of Hondo and see what kind of things we can do here.
But this, you know, when we talked about this, this is really just presenting the information that we already have. It took, I can speak for myself, it took me probably. Eight months to understand all of the different elements and what are the truly impactful things. And so it's trying to put the really impactful things front and center and giving you a comparison. The way that I used to see it before we had changed this was you saw this fund, this is our income. And then three slides or three decks later, these are our expenses, and you don't have correlation. And where do we expect that to be? So it's really trying to align, what is the, the expense related with the income when there's direct correlation? Like in the enterprise funds, this is how much it costs to run, this is how much we made. And this is where we expect to be. So it's trying to present it in that term. So that you can understand not just where do we stand as a whole, but like with, if you look at property tax. If you come up on property tax in right now, the amount that we've collected looks like it's, it's much. Sales tax doesn't look like it's much because most of the revenue comes toward the summer. So it's really trying to give that kind of clear view of what is our actual fiscal health in terms of what we would expect. These guys know it really well. They've been doing it for years. And so it's just trying to get this into our brains, so that we can make decisions based on that and into the public, so that they can understand it in one slide. This is, this is that. So, but I think that you've made great progress with this. I think this is heads and tails above where it was.
It's getting better, yeah. There's still, there's still room for improvement. So I, I, I'm trying to remember, I, it's, I looked at those reports as they came in on Friday, and I haven't had a chance to sit down and review them again. But I'm trying to think if there's anything that I wanted to brag about or highlight. I know one of the issues with our P D has just been getting all of our I T, various I T issues resolved. And as of right now. Afraid to say it out loud. Things are, things are working. Now, we are in the process.
I'm going to ask him after the meeting.
Yeah, we are in the process of transferring, so I, I presented to you all a, a fiber loop that we would build out. It was going to be like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to build out our own fiber loop, and then we would never, all we'd have to pay for is the, the. Fee coming in, which now with RISE, we might actually get for free. Y'all shot that down, said, no, go with A T and T. I went with A T and T, or no, A T and Spectrum. And had them look at what it costs to bring fiber, and it was eighty-five thousand dollars in year one. And I was like, yep, nope, we're not doing that. So what we've done now is we're going to one gigabit coax to all of our facilities. For, that, we don't have to pay the bill to build it out. We're on a month-to-month contract. And the concept is, once we're switched out, once RISE broadband is, is willing to, are able to provide us, and they've offered you that free at no charge to the city. Once they've built out their fiber to each of our facilities, then we'll look at the expense of putting fiber. It shouldn't be a, a major expense, honestly, to put fiber in the buildings that already had it. Which were the wastewater treatment plant, the, the services building up the hill. I didn't realize both of them were on fiber, but they were. Neither of them ever had coax, or at least there's no coax billed out there. We have to build it. Or they're going to have to build it. They just aren't going to charge us, how the spectrum is. We had fiber here, we had fiber at the P D, we had fiber at Public Works, and we had fiber at the library. So when, when RISE comes in, they should be able to utilize our existing equipment and bring fiber into the building without any major expense to the city. When that happens.
Do we own that equipment? I'm pretty sure that's Spectrum's.
Well, they didn't take it. They left it on the wall.
Interesting.
I think it's, I don't think it's, well, it is.
Somebody mentioned.
We'll talk later. How about that? We'll talk later. So anyway, but I still have to trans, so coax is now, that one gig coax has been run to all of our facilities. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, our, we have VoIP phones, we have other systems that, we upgraded a fiber for a reason. To be able to, to manage and utilize the, the servers, the way that we have them set up. So we'll see how this, this coax performs. If it ends up being a challenge, it will still only be a short-term challenge. It'll be until we get the RISE brought to us.
Do we have a timeline on that?
Not really. I mean, probably first, probably this time next year is what I'm anticipating. Because they're going to, they're going to finish the build out this, like, in the next couple of months. They'll, they'll, they'll have all their conduit run. Then they've got to pull all the fiber, and then they've got to do the individual runs to wherever they're taking it to. So all that's going to take some time, but to be conservative estimate, I think, is early next year. But it's possible to be done by the end of the year.
I think that we really, so my, let's, my. Previous role, a couple of companies ago, I worked for Time Warner before Spectrum, same company. And in dealing, and I dealt with business WAN, which is exactly what we're talking about here. I'll tell you that the coax is nowhere near as reliable as the fiber. You will have outages because of that. We were on a different version of DOCSIS, which is basically the, the protocol that they're using to, to transmit. So that is better. They are able to get higher bandwidths, but the reliability of coax with all of the things that can go wrong with it. Definitely, we need to make sure that.
It's not a good long-term solution.
No, it's not for, it's not for a business that is, needs to be up and running. We just need to make sure that we're reacting properly so that if people are calling, they still have the ability to get through to us. Or we've got an answering service to be able to handle that, or do something to make sure that.
But I am going to assume you did not want me to spend eighty-five thousand dollars, right?
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, no.
Making sure I made the right call there.
Yes.
So that, we do still have, what I was going to say, just to finish that up, is we do have to transfer from fiber to the coax. Coax has been brought to all of our buildings now, but we haven't actually physically transferred it from, we're still on the old fiber. And we're paying consumables still for that fiber. So we need, so V C three is going to come in Thursday of this week. And one of their things they're going to have to do is make sure that they put the right protocols in place. I try, because I'm an idiot. I tried, I just unplugged the, the cat five. From the coax. I was like, well, I can do that. I can see where it goes. Like, here's where it is from the fiber. I'll just plug it into where it needs to go. Thinking that's, I mean, it's, it's going to get the internet. Uh, no, there's obviously some programming that has to happen.
So please stay away from our electrical system.
Well, I didn't hear anything, but, but I heard my wifi went down. I was like, oh, I guess that won't work. So I plugged it back in. I left it alone.
Touch this.
I learned that I'm not I T, which is fine. I thought I would try to do it. Didn't work. So it's more than just, my point is, it's more than just unplugging a cable. They're going to have to do some programming on servers to, to make it run on coax. And then we'll have to do that again when we switch back to RISE, but that should happen this Thursday, so I'm only saying that because they're. Cross your fingers and make sure nothing goes wrong.
Let's send out an I info alert just to say, hey, city is switching over. By the way, I've got to, thank you. We got a, we got a door flyer. They were walking around this morning letting us know about the switch over. That is perfect. For those of you that know, they're doing some kind of, I, I wish that we actually knew what they were doing. I should know about these things. I don't, but they're doing some electrical, I've seen them replacing poles over on Gentile's. And they came, I didn't even know that they were doing this, but to your credit, to staff's credit, if you're listening, and they came out proactively to say, by the way, next week. Be prepared, it's going to be shut off about this time. So that's perfect. I think if we can continue to do that kind of stuff. And for this, send out the I info alert and just say, city, phones may be impacted by this, and if they're not, then that's great, but at least they know what to expect.
This is city's utility.
Yeah, the electrical system.
Right.
Which I'd love to get that on our next report, what they're doing with it.
I'm a little concerned about. The fact that we don't have an enterprise plan. And I respect what you're doing, and I appreciate all the work you're doing, but. It seems to me we should be going to somebody like V C three, or maybe the enterprise portion of. Spectrum, where, where they do enterprise planning, because.
Spectrum doesn't do that.
They don't do it?
No, but, but V C three, I mean, they're the, the company that we contracted with. I don't know, is that. What we talked about before was strategic planning initiatives with them, and so they should be able to handle that. They've got the expertise.
Yeah, I, I would think they'd have some kind of enterprise planning. What I'm concerned about is that, that we have a plan that builds upon itself, that doesn't have to go back and replace and remove. We just waste money.
City policies.
We need a long-term strategy and a plan that's all focused on the goals that you've set. And, because we don't know what RISE Communications is going to do. The only thing their brochure says is, sign up early to get on the list. We'll talk to you in the future. And they don't give you any prices, anything. There's really nothing to plan on.
I did get their pricing from them, but, okay.
Okay, Councilmember.
I was just going to say we strayed pretty far from the agenda item. This is maybe a future agenda item to add.
Uh, this, while he's talking about the.
Well, he started by talking about the police department and their new technology. We strayed from there.
That's true. You're right. Good job, David.
They're next.
Yep.
I want to go home.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, we were getting so close. It was going to be eight o'clock.
Okay. Any other questions about the?
Staff reports.
Staff reports.
Yeah, just a quick observation on the code compliance report. It was very vague. We used to get a report listing the address and what the violation was for the code compliance and what the status is. This time, we just got the violation, received, open, closed, pending, year-to-date. No details. So if we could get that back, it'd be fabulous. And then I had a citizen, not in my district, approach me. The, they came out and, and put the new A M I meter on her gas system for her house and caused a gas leak. When she asked them if they were going to fix it, they go, no, you got to take care of it. So she's been told it's going to cost her five thousand dollars to fix this gas leak. Isn't A M I, or whoever's.
There sounds like some stuff that's lost in translation, but if you'll afford that to me, I will look into it.
Yeah, I sure will. Thank you. Oh, and the trailer regarding code compliance that I had called you about. You said you were going to find out if that's, if code compliance, if there's any violations.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll, I'll give you a report on that. I, I need a follow-up.
Okay. That's it.
Great. Councilman King?
I'd like to report, again, some of them I, I, we always, it's always better to have, but I realize the chief had mentioned that he's just sitting down now with code compliance and transition and have better understanding of that, so. We can't precipitate on that anymore.
Well, you can, but she won't listen to you.
She's saying.
She's.
But, because he had mentioned the other day. Chief James said that he was going to be, you know, he's, he's sitting down with the code compliance people, so I figured that'll, that'll come out. The, curiously, the fuel went down at the, the, the fuel cells went down at the airport, but the number of landings went up dramatically. What, any thoughts about all of that?
Uh, yeah, well, so fuel cells go down, uh, landing stuff.
Well, part of it's the accuracy, so it's not that the landings actually went up. Our, our, our ability to track them went up.
We switched over to something called Bird Tower, and this one, this system is, I want to say at least twenty-five or so percent more accurate than this system had last year.
Okay.
And so in return, it looks like the landings went up and the fuel cells went down, but actually we were catching all the landings last year.
That's what I'm saying. If you were to, if you were to correct for the amount it was off before, it's probably about the same, I mean.
Well, in the back of my mind, I was thinking that they're going somewhere else because they're selling gas a lot cheaper somewhere else than us, but.
It is like, there's a fly school, so a lot of those things, um, there's a fly school that goes on Spinston. And they come and they do, um, training out of our airport. They go out to Spinston and fuel because they gave it for, at the price of their F D O there. We are actually going to reach out to them and just talk to them, say if there's any line of Spinston or something, so they can start buying from us, but they do, they'll do.
But that's atypical. I mean, most of the people, most of the pilots tell us that we've got the best fuel price around.
Well, that's just something that went through my head when I saw those two numbers and then, but I, because I, but I figured you guys are being competitive. And that was it. That was the only comment I had.
Councilman Kerry?
No, I, I, I appreciated the, uh, the reports. I just shared, uh, the council member Martinez's view that the code compliance report was a little light, but expected.
I'll work, I'll work with Jim.
Great. All right. Councilmember.
Just one comment. In the, the community development report, it notes something that I had made a note of to bring up during future agenda items, which is that. The Planning and Zoning Commission has, once again, not given us any feedback on development agreement policy. They've had it for two meetings now, and they want to hold on to it until their April meeting as well.
No. What they would like to.
Where did that, they provided comments, um, sorry, when I was writing that, uh, there's plenty of meetings. It was on Thursday of last week, so it was probably a little off. I thought it was going to. They provided comments that they're going to, I couldn't get on this week's meeting, but those comments for the development policy will come back to all for the next meeting.
Excellent. So they did make comments, but they, one of the things they recommended is that you meet as a joint board, planning and zoning and council. I'll, I'll prepare you mentally. You know, they are not on the same page. So it, it probably would behoove you to sit down and, and, and have a joint meeting and, and talk about, you'll be able to talk through why you're pursuing one avenue. Because they, they were, they were kind of of a mind to completely rewrite the development agreement policy. They felt like.
And the general feeling was too onerous?
Yeah, too onerous, too specific, too much detail. Needs to be big picture, and, and I, yeah, I did kind of own up to some of that because I said, well, look, you know, part of this was meant to be a stopgap for the U D O. And, and part of this also was to capture some of the things that we were already asking for in a development agreement. And these are things that we can't require in a U D O, U D O in some cases, and so we wanted to capture that very specific detail, but things like the garages. Uh, that, that's an area where, yeah, they, just, y'all don't see an I D I. So that'll be back on the next council meeting. Okay, David? Making sure I don't stray too far. Normally I'll worry about this one, but I'm going to start worrying about you.
Uh, that's all. Thank you.
All right, great. Anybody else? All right, next agenda item is discussion on future agenda items. What are we missing? Has anybody had a problem accessing the future agenda items worksheet? Everybody's good? Okay, great.
I was under the impression that the U D O was not going to address the Historic Landmark Commission. Is that correct?
I don't think. Well, I don't think so. I think that that's a separate item, isn't it?
Well, the district, okay, there's, there's, there's a question of a district. And the district is, is not going to be addressed in the U D O. There's certain, there are standards, building standards, et cetera, that may be addressed in the U D O that would overlap with the H L C to a certain extent. That would apply to all houses, for instance.
So, but the, but the definition and description of their responsibilities, everything will be in the U D O?
Well, so historically.
The designation of the committee and the structure of the committee and their responsibilities will be in the U D O?
I'm thinking about two things at once. One, whether or not this is something we can talk about, and two. Inclusion of our current standards in the U D O, is that what you're saying? I would expect so. We will, we can verify, guess what? We have a code rodeo tomorrow. We can talk about that tomorrow.
There you go.
Between one and four. I'll ask that question. If you're not able to be there, I'll, I will make sure and ask that question. And who's on the pack with me? Phil?
But that's not tomorrow. That's Thursday.
That's Thursday, right.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we, we're going to have a pack meeting.
Thursday.
Yeah, but there is a meeting at the American Legion tomorrow from one to four.
Right, but that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the pack meeting is lunch on Thursday.
Eleven, eleven-thirty.
During my rotary meeting.
So that's, yeah, that's Priscilla and.
Kyle.
Kyle.
But we'll just, you'll need to help keep me on us, make sure we, we ask about that.
Yep.
The reason I ask is that. I still am under the impression that the, uh, increased regulation over additional properties have never been brought to a public meeting. And it should be.
So the future agenda item on there is to address.
The increased regulation over additional properties.
Yeah. And how we're going to get that out and have the public meeting. If that's another public meeting.
State law requires that those people be here.
Yeah. Well, and our obligation to them as well.
So under future agenda items, we will just.
When the, when the, uh, recent decision was made that the Historic Landmark Commission had jurisdiction over the entire E T zone instead of just the ninety-six homes or properties. I did a little digging, and there is a provision in the local government code that no. No increased regulation can be effective until there has been a public hearing, which persons of interest or property owners affected have been heard.
Basically, it was an ordinance that we didn't understand fully until we did. And we want to make sure that everybody else understands it the way that we do. We still have some, some management to do on that, but what we're talking about doing is having that public hearing so that we're not making that decision in a vacuum. It's made with the people that it impacts. There are people that don't have historic homes that are going to be under the regulations. They have historic, uh, or properties in that historic district, and so we want to make sure that that discussion happens with them. So we just need to figure out when we can be prepared for that, what Simple City said.
We're on future agenda items.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I was making sure.
Yeah, this is the future.
We moved off our report, and we're on future agenda.
The future agenda item is trying to figure out.
We're trying to distill this item, I think, at this point.
Right. So because Simple City said this is outside of their scope, we still need to have the discussion about how that interacts with that. We can talk to them about it tomorrow as well, so that's part of it, but our item would be to get the constructs and the things that we. that we need to address, some of the potential issues with it, and some of the challenges with it, um, the, uh, like, time of appropriateness, the, um, appeals process, that kind of thing, so we should get that, we should compile that together, have that public meeting, to let people know what the challenges are, and how we're addressing them, and get their input on it, and then we can go through and start refining cuts, so I think that's probably, again...
Is this on the pending list?
This, yeah, I'm trying to figure out when that would happen, yeah, we'll have to figure out.
I'm trying to figure out the subject, I mean, I know you said the regulations of the H L C.
So this is the public hearing and discussion on the implementation, uh, and...
H L C's authority.
Of H L C's...
Oversight.
Jurisdiction.
Oversight.
Of the policy of that, whatever ordinance that was.
Okay, so, at, at a future meeting, you're gonna call a public hearing as only to publish it?
Yes.
Okay.
To discuss the historic, uh, district ordinance.
And I, I just think it should be done before we get too far along with the, um, U D O.
Well, I don't think the U D O has an impact on that. There are implications, they're doing things like protection zones, so, like, certain residential areas are protection zones, uh, and they're doing other areas that are commercial appropriate or commercial adjacent, very similar to what we've got right now, yeah, yeah, okay, cool.
Okay, that's what I had.
So, let's figure out what that looks like, um, will you put that on the pending agenda list? Just put it on for May, probably won't happen in May, um, but we can look at that juxtaposition with the other one.
We're gonna have the same council after we...
Put, if you would, when you add it, put your name and...
Yes, I would, so that way I know.
We're leading to a future agenda, so I can fit this one in, what I heard tonight is that Herb and I will not be attending the May 14th council meeting, so it's, two of us are gonna be gone, that meeting, if anybody else is planning to be there, you're not gonna have a forum, so...
Let's see what happens.
All right. That's the date, that's the swearing-in ceremony.
I'm sworn in, no, it'll be the first one to get in.
The second one's the swearing-in ceremony.
I'm talking about the...
But it wouldn't have to be May 14th?
The 14th will be the first. The 14th is the first meeting in May, and I won't be here, and neither will Herb.
Herb, I would, he would, he would, so the only ones who get sworn in is gonna be you.
Yeah, it would normally be Phil, David, and Herb, I'm just pointing it out, sorry, so normally, the two of you would be sworn in at that meeting, but you're both gonna